I now call to order the regulation session meeting of the Board of Commissions of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, June 25th, 2019, 2019 at 6:30 PM. Roll call please.
Mayor Alahuza's?
Here.
Vice Mayor Terapanis absent and excused. Commissioner Seber?
Here.
Commissioner Carr?
Here.
Commissioner Donovan?
Here.
Tonight's invocation will be given by Reverend Tunnel from the All Saints Episcopal Church. If you please stand and remain standing also for the presentation of the flag by Tarpon Springs Public Safety Honor Guard and for the Pledge of Allegion.
Almighty God, our Heavenly Father, send down upon those who hold office in this city the Spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people. Amen.
Present the flags. Present the colors. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for Thank you. Please be seated. We are now going to the public comments of the items that will not be discussed tonight. If you have any comments, please come forward, state your name and your address for the record, and you'll be given four minutes. Thank you.
Good evening. Anita Protus, 901 Bayshore Drive. I'd like to know where our sponge boat is, the Tarpon Springs Sponge Boat, and when will it return to the docks? It's been gone for quite a while. I know it's being repaired, but how long does it take? It's been gone for a long time, and we have a lot of tourists down there, and it needs to be there. Does anyone have an answer?
As soon as it gets fixed.
But how long? They've had it for quite a while.
We'll get it back as soon as it's ready to come back.
That's a vague answer, but that's okay. There's no date.
Well, I'll go, I'll, call me tomorrow. I'll ask and see where we are.
All right. The second thing is, what liability do we have as a community without a lifeguard at our municipal beach? I go out there in the evenings and on weekends to drink my coffee, my tea, watch the sunset. It's beautiful. But where the boats come in, to the trailers, there's people swimming out there and children and all over, and we do not have a lifeguard watching. They do have one at Fred Howard Park Beach, but it doesn't help us. What liability are we looking at without a lifeguard at the beach?
Give back to you.
Well, it's an important thing. We haven't had one for a while, and it's the safety of the people there.
You're right. It is important.
And I was, when it hit me in my brain, I said, oh, my God, how long it's been since we've had one.
Yeah.
Well, these are things we have to think about for the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
My name is Andreas Salivara, 495 Riverside Drive. I want to come publicly to say thank you. Finally, one commissioner who started to pay attention to the sponge ducks. The commissioner really paid attention after so many years we pushed him. I'm talking behalf of Subcommittee for the Sponge Duck. Israel, you don't mind if I call you with a fresh name, involved with the Subcommittee. And the first thing, he put up banners. The city, they removed the banners, and finally, I think two weeks or three weeks, we put them back, two weeks, the banners for the sponge ducks. Secondly, we tried to put lights. Who is willing? And the Subcommittee with the Sponge Ducks Association to put out our own lights to make more visible the sponge ducks. I mentioned a long time ago, the sponge ducks, the city commissioners, I'm talking for the new commissioner, they never pay attention. And I talked to the real many times. I'd say, Real, why the sponge ducks want to do something better? And I want to thank you, city manager, because she listened to me a couple of times. Not because only from Andreas Salivara, because I own restaurants in the sponge ducks, but they all call sponge ducks for everybody, not only for me. But lately, the commissions, they ignore the sponge ducks. And I want to mention, and I want to mention the names of Mr. Donovan, or Mr. Carr, or Mr. Terapanis. And I'm going to say what I think about, because it's not fair, because I know you all of you so many years. And I'm going to say, we have the private club, the commissioners. This is not unfair. But I'm going to say tonight, on behalf of the Subcommittee of the Sponge Ducks, who is involved, Real, we needed so many things in the sponge ducks, especially lights. Don't ignore it, because every place we go, any city we go, especially the main street, we have a lot of lights. We used to have a lot of pots with the flowers. We remove it for some reason. I want you, I'm telling you tonight, and I want it to, the city commissioners and the city mayor to pay a little better attention. And publicly, I'm going to repeat one more time, I want to thank you, Real, because you, first time, for after so many years, she say, yes, we have to support the sponge ducks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Salivara, and I hope you stay here a little longer, because item number 10 is pertaining to sponge ducks. So I think it's something that you'd be interested to hear. Thank you very much. Any other public comments?
Hello. My name is Donnie Williams. I don't have an actual address. A PO Box 1122 in Tarpon Springs. But I come here today to address, you know, like the kind of, well, the harassment going on in the black minority neighborhood, you know? It's a situation that is, you know, kind of out of hand, you know, pretty much out of hand, not kind of, you know, and something needs to be done about that. I have actual footage, you know, I put in complaints, and, you know, it's something that needs to be addressed here in this community. So, I mean, where do we go from here?
Thank you for your comment.
Okay.
Hi. My name is Johnell Lee Jones. I stay at 1217 Normandy Drive, and also I have a complaint about the cops, a lot of harassing. I've been working for almost 20 years, and I went to the cap center to pick up my son, and a cop pulled me over, and the first thing he said was, you know why I pulled you over? Because you didn't have your seatbelt on. And I said, okay. He said, you have your license on you? I said, well, sir, I do have gun license, but I think my gun is in my glove box, and I don't want to reach for it. He said, okay, give me your name, social security number, and everything will be okay. He comes back to the vehicle and goes, Mr. Jones, step out of the vehicle, and I asked why. He said, well, just step out of the vehicle. I said, why? The other cop come to the car and pull the gun on me. He said, get out the car. I said, why? He go, you've been detained. And I asked why? He said, well, we're looking for your weapon. I said, well, I have gun license, so why would you looking for it? So he goes through my vehicle, and so along, he finds some marijuana. He tell me the reason why he's in my car, because he's looking, and he find marijuana. So they want to charge me with the marijuana they find in my car. For improper cause, they're pulling me over for the seatbelt. And I told him, my son go to school right there. I haven't smoked. I just got off of work. I was harassed in front of my son and handcuffed, and then they let me go. Three weeks, couple of weeks later, I'm down at a party. Two girls get in a fight. Cops come over, pull out shotguns, guns everywhere. Two girls get in a fight now. There's kids everywhere. He tell everybody, get away, get back, get back. He pulls the gun out on a kid, tell the kid, you need to get out by face, get in the car and leave. Why so aggressive? And I'm starting to wonder with the Tarpon Springs Police Department, if a cop pull you over and tell you he smell marijuana, and he doesn't find nothing, what happens to the cop? You got a right to just search my vehicle because you say you smell marijuana? Oh, we do have dogs, so why the cops got a right to just tell you, I smell something, and I can search? Is that violating any of your laws, or you just have the right to do whatever you want to do at any given time? So if you don't smell marijuana, would the cop go to jail? Would he get any charges, or he just brush up under the rug? No answers?
This is a, Mayor, can we just?
No, no, no. I want to thank you for your comment. Thank you.
It's public comment, though, and typically, we don't reply to public comment, so this is you just come and make a statement during public comment, and we can follow up afterwards if you want to follow up with the commissioner, or the city manager, or the police chief. But typically, there's not a going back and forth, so I don't know.
I don't want to go back and forth. I just was wondering, would anything happens to the cop? Or do they just have the right to just say, I smell something, and don't use the dog? Is that a legal search? You can answer those questions?
Sorry.
Well, thank you very much, but the police chief is right here. He's listening to you.
Nobody answering.
Your comment. He will give back with you later. Thank you so much.
Just can't do that right now.
Thank you. Do we have any other comment? Well, thank you very much. The first item on the agenda is a proclamation. City of Tarpon Springs proclamation would ask, Honor Guard across the United States serve with honor, dignity, and royalty. And would ask, Honor Guards demonstrate high regards for the traditions of the United States military, public safety organizations, and other agencies, in honor the veterans who serve our country. And would ask, Honor Guards are comprised and courageous men and women who have served in the military law enforcement part service, public safety and emergency medical service. And would ask, all those who wear the uniform understand the sacrifice and the wounds faced, those risk every day in order to create a safe nation and communities for all Americans. And would ask, Honor Guards serve our communities through participation in service for the fallen, presenting the colors with honor and involvement in the community memorials. And would ask, this is an opportunity for the City of Tarpon Springs to recognize the services and sacrifice and show appreciation to the Honor Guard. And now therefore, I, Chris Alahuza, by the virtue of the authority vested in me, as the mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, do hereby proclaim June 29th, 2019 as Honor Guard Day. And I'd like to invite the Honor Guard to receive the proclamation. Are there any public comments of this item? Here none. We are now going to the item number two, which is Independence Day. Commissioner Seber?
Yes. City of Tarpon Springs, Florida proclamation. Whereas on this anniversary of the signing of our Declaration of Independence, we pay tribute to the courage and dedication of those patriots who established our great country. And whereas we celebrate the values of justice and equality that strengthen our country. And whereas as celebrating our country's cherished independence, we should not only take pride in our vibrant history, but also look at the future with hope, confidence, and grace. And whereas we offer immense gratitude to all the patriots of both our past and present, who have sought to advance freedom, establish virtue, and build foundation of peace. Because of their sacrifice, this country remains a beacon of hope for all who dream of a life filled with liberty, justice, and happiness. Now therefore, I, Commissioner Reyes Seber, Seber, by virtue of the authority vested in the mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, do hereby proclaim July 4th, 2019 as Independence Day. And this will be mailed.
Thank you. Are there any commission comments? Are there any public comments of this item? Here none. Thank you. And we are now going to the presentations. Item number three is the presentation FEMA firm map updates by Mark Gosselin, Director of Hydraulics and Coastal Modeling, Internet Geo- Geoscience and Engineering Solutions.
I'm going to go ahead and introduce you to Dr. Gosselin. He's the Director of Hydraulics and Coastal Modeling for Inter- Inter Corporation. He's been a coastal engineer with 29 years of experience modeling coastal storm surge and climate, wave climate associated with hurricanes. Dr. Gosselin is a registered professional engineer in Florida and Louisiana, and he holds degrees from Dartmouth College, University of California, Berkeley, and the University of Florida. He's going to go ahead and talk about the firm map updates.
Thank you for inviting me to speak today. I'm going to talk about the changes that are in store associated with your flood insurance rate maps or firms. First, why are the insurance rate maps being updated? Well, our understanding of flood risk changes over time. The current effective study, the current effective flood maps are based on outdated hurricane model, modeling, as well as outdated topographic data. Our ability to more accurately define risk, they're changing so that we can improve our ability to more define risk and account for the significant development that has occurred throughout the county. Additionally, by getting a better, more complete and current picture of coastal flood risk, this helps communities plan for this risk, communicate the risk to your citizens, take action to reduce flood risks, or the flood risk to lives and property, as well as allows us to build safer and smarter. So the current maps are based on surge modeling that was done approximately three to four decades ago. It was done back in 1979 for the update that was published in the early 80s. At that point, it was based on hurricane climatological data up through 1977. So with the new maps, your risk will be better defined through updated elevation data. Our surveying acquisition is much better than it was back in the late 70s. New climatological data based on the recent 40 years since the study had been done, updated coastal hazard methodologies and procedures, modeling. Computer resources have changed significantly since the 70s, as I'm sure I don't have to remind you all. Also, there's been improvements to GIS technologies that allow the mapping to occur on a more consistent basis. So just to review a little bit as to what you look at when you look at a flood insurance rate map. What the map is telling you in terms of elevations are a combination, okay, a combination of the red line, which is the stillwater elevation, that's the elevation to which the surge rises as the hurricane comes in, adds to the wave height, which becomes the blue line, the dashed blue line, okay? So what you're looking at when you look at the elevations of the map are the height of the wave associated with that 1 in 100 year or 1% chance of occurrence per year storm. If the wave heights are above three feet, it's designated as a VE zone. The V stands for velocity, with the recognition that waves above three feet will create significant velocities in those areas, and as such, commensurate damage. Below three feet, it's designated as an AE zone. The AE zone is divided between waves between three and a foot and a half feet, and then waves between a foot and a half and zero feet, by a new feature called the limo, or limit of wave action. So these designate the different areas and different building codes, and insurance rates apply within each designation. So where are we in the process of updating the maps? The study was started back in 2012, and then over the intermediate five years there, there's been various accomplishments in terms of completing those studies. We are currently in the appeal period, so the preliminary maps have been developed and are available publicly for comment. Come July 31st, they will close the comment and appeal period, and then we can expect these new maps to become effective sometime around the winter or spring, depending on the resolution of the comments during this period. We've been contracted by the county to review the maps to make sure that they follow FEMA procedures for accuracy, as well as methodology. The review itself took several steps, including preliminary review, a parcel level analysis, where we looked at the changes on a parcel by parcel basis. We did a countywide review, which included documentation review, comparing the maps before and after, as well as all the model inputs and outputs, and then a detailed review, which include several aspects. In terms of your community, I'm happy to report that only 13% of the properties within Tarpon Springs will experience some change in zone designation or base flood elevation, which would essentially result in an increase. So it's an either an increase in zone designation or an increase in base flood elevation. So I had mentioned that the current maps were based on modeling that was done back in the 70s. I just wanted to give you all a quick flavor as to what sort of improvements are associated with the current maps. The picture on the right is, represents the modeling that was done in the 70s. Each of the squares represented one of those computational domains. So the, you can tell this is Gordon Pass down in southwest Florida, that we're doing, back in the 70s, it was a rather coarse, rough job as to how they resolved storm surge. Here's an example of Stewart. The one on the left is the old modeling, and the one on the right, if you can see all the little dots associated with those, that's the resolution of the new modeling, just to give you a flavor as to how much more resolved the new modeling is. And this is actually the model associated with Pinellas County. So you can see the resolution associated with this new modeling. In addition to that, the modeling that was performed in the 70s did not include any wave modeling. They simply assumed a wave climate based on the depths of the surge. Back around 2000, when they revised the maps then, they did solve for wave climate, but only along the Gulf Coast and not along the interior bay coast. So the latest map represents more accurate wave modeling along both sides of Pinellas This map shows what's happening across your city in terms of changes in flood map elevation. So the hatched areas are areas where there are increases in zone. I know it's kind of hard to see based on the color of this map, but it, these changes in zone are primarily focused around the coastline, where we have changes between AE and VE zones. But in general, most of the county shows green contours. The contours represent changes in base flood elevation. So much of the county will see a decrease in base flood elevation. Why is this happening in this city along the Gulf Coast here? The main reason is, this area's been very blessed in that it's been relatively quiet 40 years. Hurricane climatology has been relatively quiet, and that has made its way into the study by a reduction in the probability of these larger storm events in this area, simply based on what's happened over the intermediate 40 years there. So if you're interested in taking a look specifically at your own properties, the Pinellas County website is a great resource, pinellascounty.org/flooding.
Just turn off the cell phone, please.
If you, if you start at that page and click. If you, if you start at that page and click, I'm sorry, how I said it. FEMA firm updates button on the left, you'll come to this page where there will be a yellow box containing two choices, the quick view and the detailed view. If you click the quick view, you can zoom into your individual properties. This actually has a slider bar, which you can toggle back and forth between your current effective insurance rate maps and the preliminary maps associated with the new study. If you go to the detailed view, you can click your property, and it will tell you what changes in the dialog box that comes up, what changes there are to your property in terms of zone and elevation. So as far as our review goes, we've completed much of it at this point. We're putting the final touches on our detailed review. Throughout the county, we did a detailed review of the wave modeling along approximately 90 transects, a few of which, how many do we have here? Okay, so we had several here, and in fact, one of them revealed an area that we're going to recommend for change. The, let me make sure I get this with the Bay Shore Heights. Does that ring a bell? Yes, that area itself, I guess, has been recently developed, and as a result, the mapping reflects the old condition, and we're going to recommend that they alter the mapping to reflect the new condition along that transect. So the next steps between now and the 31st, we've closed the summer, or we finished collecting? Today's the deadline for submitting your summary of map amendment, or map action, rather, to include letters of map change which may have not been addressed in the ones that were sent to you by FEMA. And we're finalizing our detailed review and transmitting our comments to FEMA. If we deem there is a reason for an appeal, we were prepared as appropriate, and we had a public meeting earlier today, that's why that's there. So I'll remind you that there are resources available on the Pinellas County webpage under Flooding, and at this point, if they have any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Goslin. Thank you for the presentation. The question that I have is, the data that we use now is 30 to 40 years old, and with the new data that we have, and hopefully it will be updated more often, what effect is it going to have with the builder code?
What effect is it going to have on the building codes? That's a little outside of my head.
It's not going to have an effect on the building code itself. It's going to have an effect on how we develop in the communities. So as the maps change, if we get a, an area that was an AE, it's going to go to an X, it's going to change how we build on that particular parcel, but the building code itself isn't going to see a change. They address flooding within the building code since it's a statewide code.
Okay. So the residents expecting to see some changes for their, for their areas then, right?
Yes, there's going to be several changes here, and more for the positive than the negative. I think it's 13% that's going to go negative.
See if it's an adverse change.
Right, so only 13%.
Oh, good. On an A zone, then the AE coastal ice, okay.
Thank you. Any commission comment?
No, I just want to thank you for the presentation, and it's nice to inform our citizens where to go to for information. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. I don't know if our building director or the city manager could answer this, but are any of the city insurance plans going to be affected by this positively or negatively for any of the city properties? Are those getting rezoned, or are we just not sure yet until it comes out?
Right now, it's a preliminary mapping, and it will affect some of our properties will go to the better in some areas. I'm not sure about every single property we have. We would have to go ahead and look at that and see what the changes are going to be.
Okay, thank you, that's it.
Thank you. Any public comments on this item? Are there any public comments on this item? Here none? Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item number four is another presentation for the Public Art Committee. Ms. Jenick.
This is the Tarpon Springs Public Art Committee Annual Report. We've been working diligently to put together some summary of what we've accomplished this past year and to project some of the projects we're considering. Our accomplishments this year have been the installation of 17 artistic bike racks around town, installed the Glenna Goodacre Niyad Sculpture Grouping in the roundabout at the west end of the Dodecanese Boulevard that included a water feature, revised the Public Arts brochure to reflect our recent accomplishments, and assisted the city in design for gateway signage at several key highway access points to Tarpon Springs. This is the plan for our proposed budget. We are putting the finishing touches on several projects. We are following up on the Board of Commissioners' comments requesting a historic mural and two other large murals painted by local artists. We are encouraging interest in the arts by proposing a scholarship to be set up for Tarpon Art students. Artist plaques will identify the individuals who created the bicycle racks, they'll be done in light aluminum, and creating heavy bronze plaques for the more substantial projects like the Niyads, the Sunburst Murals, et cetera. The Amma Mermaid on the bayou is in dire need of repair due to environmental issues. In order to secure the best and most qualified artists for every PAC project, the city has been utilizing CAFE, the nationally recognized art mart. We've economized this year by printing the public art brochures in-house. That mechanism also allows for frequent updates as necessary. Our projects are deserving of public and press to announce the strides made in advancing all of the projects in Tarpon Springs, thus the budget for the unveiling event. Some of the newer projects we're proposing is an artist alley. The Public Art Committee is charged by our ordinance with using high standards of artistic endeavors and were chosen on their experience and creativity. The city and the Board of Commissioners has charged us with creating new creative and innovative projects that while utilizing the imagery and cultural icons distinct to Tarpon Springs, will set it apart from the rest of the municipalities in Pinellas and indeed the state. We are proposing a unique art destination, Artist Alley, creating murals by local artists, many of which can be interactive, on the alleyway behind the stores on Tarpon Avenue that connects Hibiscus to the bike trail on Safford. We are considering a major mural on a wall of a private building, possibly at the entrance to Hibiscus, we're still exploring locations. That would possibly be the focal point and jewel that would attract pedestrians to the alley. With a nod to the recently created Sustainability Committee, we envisioned a metal mesh-plastic recycling creature, somewhat known, sometimes known as a Gobi fish, on Sunset Beach, as well as a more substantial steel tarp and sculpture. Again, using solar power, illuminated art boxes would not only light a walkable path, but create a mechanism for displaying local art that can be changed out at a very low cost on a monthly or bimonthly basis, including the Board of Commissioner's suggestion that we utilize vintage holiday cards and art around the bayou. The Elizabeth Indianas Historic Mural incorporates many facets of Tarpon Springs history in a beautifully imagined mural. We hope to locate the mural on an appropriately significant location and have explored various media so that should the location experience a sale or other issues, the mural can be moved intact to another site without damage. These are just a few draft examples of what some of the Artist Alley murals would look like. The Board of Commissioners expressed an interest in interactive murals that would serve as backdrops for selfies that would promote Tarpon Springs by visitors and locals on social media. Plastic waste in or near waterways is an international concern. We are proposing a lightweight, low-cost mesh-plastic recycling receptacle artistically done that would be easily dumped by Public Works employees. The project would be done by a local metal artist, as possible one huge object or several smaller ones to create a grouping. The city manager and Public Works would be consulted on design specifications that would ensure that pickup and disposal would be efficiently accomplished. Solar-powered illuminated art boxes would take Tarpon into a new realm of creativity. The boxes would be created like frames with a solar array at the top mounted on a metal pole or bollard. We envision that the images would be approximately 20 by 30 inches and would be illuminated from behind. The installation would be freestanding and not require any wiring. The images could be printed locally on paper or on an acetate, using imagery supplied by local artists, some of whom could be students, and they could be changed out monthly or bimonthly. The Board of Commissioners expressed an interest in doing a holiday-themed display of vintage cards and arts around the bayou, and this would allow us not only to use those images, but to create an illuminated walkway around the bayou doing so. This is perhaps our greatest leap into the future. Using holographic techniques and array of projectors mounted on building roofs, a lifelike display of fish, animals, historic figures like a sponge diver, a sponge hooker, cracker, or tarpon, grouper, octopus, Greek dancers, fireworks, Christmas Santas, and other moving three-dimensional images could be projected over the Anqueta or the bayous to create amazing shows unlike anything that exists outside of Disney. The technology was used by the Roncalli Circus in Germany to present the feel of a traditional circus without the actual use of animals. The results are stunning, and the resultant shows would attract tourists to Tarpon to see a unique display unlike any other in the county, the state, or the southeastern United States. The technology is provided by a company in California and is not prohibitively expensive. Changing the displays is much like changing a vinyl record. This would be an innovative and unique marriage of art and technology. The Tarpon Springs Public Art Commission Committee wishes to thank the Board of Commissioners and city staff for continued support and encouragement. We are excited as we begin this new phase of contributing art to enhance the city's visual experience and sense of place. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and I want to thank you for the report, but also I want to thank you for your service to our committee. But with us today, we also have the Public Art Committee members, and I want to thank you all for being here, and want to thank you for the work that you do for the city of Tarpon Springs.
I'd like, Mayor, if I may, I'd like to especially thank our advisor Diane Wood and our city liaison Denise Manning. They've been crucial to our efforts.
Thank you. If you please stand up to be recognized, all of you. Thank you. Thank you so much. Commission comment?
Yes, yes, thank you, Joan, and thank you all for attending some of your meetings, and you've accomplished a lot this year, and especially this year. So we're moving forward, and I really appreciate all your hard work. On some of these things that you mentioned, that you're looking forward to, murals is something that we've talked about on the docks as well. We do have some nice murals on docks, and when you're thinking about where you're going to put them, please consider, you know, thinking of where, and I'm sure there's some building owners that would not mind having murals on their properties as well, so.
Right, we did have a model draft contract prepared so that when we go to building owners, we can have talking points to explain to them exactly what's involved with putting a Public Art Committee mural on their wall.
Okay.
So.
Thanks. The Gobi fish idea, I've seen it, you know, before, seen the images from other areas. I think that's a great idea. Hopefully it'll help with the plastics and straws and things that shouldn't be on the beach. I love the solar-powered boxes. I hope that we can include those on the docks as well. And then the circus thing.
That's really out there. I mean, you know, it's, it would be.
I know it's out there.
That would be, that would be a stretch, but, you know, it would be fantastic if we could pull it off, because it would be such an amazing tourist attraction for, you know.
Even if it started for the holidays.
Right, the holidays alone would be fabulous, to have Santa in his sleigh and, you know, all kinds of different, you know, Christmas decor on the, you know, either on the Anqueta or on the bayous.
Yeah, or on the sponge docks, you know, in the river.
Right, we could have, yeah, we could have sponge divers emerging from the river, we could have tarpon leaping, and, you know, and you change the images like you would change a vinyl record.
Right. It's pretty easy once you get the original.
Right.
So again, just thank you guys, and I'll try to keep coming to some of your meetings, and appreciate all your, all your hard work.
Thank you.
Thanks, Diane.
Let me check color.
Thanks, Mayor. Joan, thank you for the presentation. I know I may come across critical at times on some of the things that I'm passionate about, and obviously public art is one of them. I do want to say I think you all have done a great job putting together some ideas. I'm really impressed on some of the ideas that you've come forward with. I just want to touch on a few of them. The historic mural, I think it's an important one to have around Tarpon, that was obviously one that was in Tarpon Springs already, and then for some reason, the business owner won to cover it up for some dispute between the city, I'm not really sure what it was, many years ago. Also, I know there's some discussions about some other large murals in downtown, or just south of downtown as well. A couple other items, one of the items that I was talking to one of the members about was the scholarships that we can provide to the local St. Pete College Tarpon campus or the Tarpon Springs High School students. And I like how you all ran with this one. My initial thought was, is that we utilize a scholarship in a type of competition. Instead of just giving a scholarship just because of what they've done in the past, that we give someone an opportunity with the trash receptacles that we have at our public parks, similar to the golf course, Little League Field, Sunset Beach, Splash Park, I'm sure missing a couple more, but we have a competition to where they could create a design that they could put on that. And then the winners of the five winners, or whatever it may be, would win the $500, $750, whatever it may be, scholarship that they could use for school or whatever they want to use it for, for the project. So that was kind of my thought behind the scholarship. I think there would be an opportunity to do a competition instead of just giving a scholarship out based on maybe what they've done historically. It really gives also the students an opportunity to put some public art out in the public, and it gets their foot in the door to maybe start doing some other larger projects in other cities as well, too. So I would potentially, I would like to make the suggestion that you looked at Avenue with the scholarship, but I think you all did a great job drafting it. It looked great overall, but I think there's, you could do some type of competition with it. The maintenance is obviously an important aspect of it, of the public art. Let's see, the Artist Alley, I thought was a great idea. You really got creative with that one, the interactive art. Commissioner Seaver mentioned something about the interactive art and the murals down on the sponge docks. I think it's another important part. We have a lot of tourists in the sponge docks, so if we could somehow do a couple interactive murals down there as well, and also at Sunset Beach by the bathrooms, I think is another good spot for interactive mural. I know this is just a start, and you're heading in the right direction, and I think it is, I mean, it sounds incredible. I hope the business owners are in favor of that alleyway. I'm not sure if you've talked to them yet or not about that, but it is a really great idea. And also these solar-paneled illuminated, illuminated boxes. So when I think of the sponge docks, there's a lot of, there's a lot of tourist action during the day, right? And after the sun goes down, you have the restaurants, but that's about it. After the sun goes down, the beautiful sunset over the river, there's not a whole lot to attract people to the sponge docks. We have some restaurant activity, but I think this illuminated solar power or holograms over the Anqueta River and Spring Bayous, or wherever they may go, I think this, the Anqueta River is the best idea for the sponge docks, because we want to be able to keep somehow, how do you attract people to stay in Tarpon Springs for the night also? They come in during the day, they have lunch, and then they're gone. Maybe they would stay around for the light show, it could be changed monthly, maybe it's just done once a week on a Friday or Saturday, I'm not really sure what day it would be. And then each month it changes based on the season or whatever it may be.
Exactly.
You incorporate history. So I think you're on to something great here, and it's really, it's a cutting-edge technology that it sounds like that you're looking at, and it really fits our town that we could look at the history aspect.
Right, we really wanted to try to do something that was unique, and, but that also said Tarpon. You know?
You know, we want to preserve the, you know, the culture, the images of Tarpon, you know, the sponge docks. I thought it was interesting that Andreas talked about lighting on the sponge docks, and we were considering doing these illuminated light boxes. So it kind of also ties in somewhat with, you know, some of the interests that the merchants had, you know, in, you know, lighting up the sponge docks.
Yeah, and illuminated solar boxes, again, another great idea. You're using technology and art together. I think it's a wonderful thing. You guys have, you all have done, women and men have done a great job, so I just want to really say thank you for coming back with some great ideas. Now, the art container, I'm not a huge fan of having an open art container. I've seen this picture kind of rotate on Facebook. It's not my favorite item to see the mesh and all the plastic. I prefer to see something smaller that's covered up and contained. I think it looks cleaner overall, and we have a small beach in that area. So I wouldn't necessarily support something along those lines with the open mesh concept, but if it's more of a closed container, I would be happy to support that. I'm not sure what it would be made out of, potentially aluminum of some sort, that they could still dump it into a larger truck or something along those lines.
Well, as I mentioned, we would have to consult with Mark and Public Works because it has to be something that's easily disposed, so that's why the mesh would make it light. And the whole idea is to get people, especially children, to feed the creature, whatever it is, and, you know, but I understand what you're saying about keeping it, you know.
Yeah, I think we could come up with a good compromise overall, where I can support this project, but I would prefer it to be closed instead of just open air. Overall, I guess I really want to really, really congratulate you all for this because I'm really super excited about this moving forward over this next year. I think we're going to see a lot of great public art. We still have some funds available as well for the next year to also do some projects. So, again, thank you very much for your hard work.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Koller?
Yeah, again, to kind of echo what the other commissioners have said, you guys took our direction so well. You guys do a fantastic job of beautifying the city. I really love the Artist Alley's, love the big murals that we're getting proposed, and I really, really like the scholarship. Anything we can do to get more involved with all our local educational institutions, whether it is the college, the high school, the middle school, wherever, I think that's always a plus. I did have some questions. I just wanted to know how the artists charge for these murals, because I was looking at the numbers for the budget, and I know some artists do like per square foot when they're creating a mural, but do we let the artists bid when we're throwing out a mural opportunity, or do we set the budget and then we do the press release kind of?
Well, the idea behind the Artist Alley would be sort of using more, you know, artists more in the lines of students. There are already a number of people who are doing murals free of charge in town, so this would almost be an honorarium of some sort. And, you know, just like any other art or profession, the more qualified somebody is, the price goes up. So if we get some students who just want to literally make their mark, you know, on the town, then, you know, we would be offering them a flat honorarium price, you know, for the mural, and let them be creative. Of course, we would have to get, you know, approval for the, you know, the subject matter. But, you know, when you get into some, something like, you know, a named artist who is doing a mural, then the game changes.
Yeah.
So, you know, the Artist Alley would really be to encourage, you know, unknown artists, you know, something almost on the line of a graffiti artist, and to create a fun atmosphere. And I know, so, you know, at the workshop that you had on, at the end of May, I know there was a lot of talk about doing selfie opportunities, and that would be the perfect opportunity to have somehow incorporate Tarpon Springs so that when people take a shot in front of the mural, everybody would know that they were in Tarpon Springs.
Yeah, absolutely. And then on the holograms, when I first saw the pictures proposing the holograms, I said there's no way that they can look this good. So I actually Googled the Roncalli Circus, and I watched.
Aren't they amazing?
Yeah, it was incredible. I was just wondering if doing it outdoors, like over the river in a bayou, would that diminish the effect of it, or would that, you know, harm the equipment if we did it over time? I just don't know kind of the environment.
The thing is, they have been done outside. I have done some research into the company. I'm planning to do some more, and the quality is there. The circus itself uses 24 projectors because it's 360 degrees. So if you could just, if you just wanted to protect 100, project 180 degrees from people, you know, say on the sponge docks or in Craig Park looking out, you know, onto the hologram projected over the bayou, you'd need half of them. But the quality is amazing, and the technology is there, and it's even, it's not even that expensive.
Yeah, absolutely. I just, and then my last thing regarding the holograms is that I would just be careful to respect the history of the area. That's why I would favor it, you know, to keep people in the sponge docks at night. I think that'd be fantastic. We could select, you know, certain places around the bayou, or even at one of our beaches, I guess, if we could get the projectors out there, but just to be cautious, because, you know, the Epiphany area, the bayou, I don't think anybody would want, you know, a hologram circus over such a sacred spot, so.
No, I was thinking more about, you know, where the mermaid is, you know, at that juncture, you know, or maybe going over even into Whitcomb.
Yeah.
You know, and, you know, I think one of the biggest things would be to have, you know, a holiday or, you know, Christmas-themed projection, because I think the kids would just love it.
Yeah.
It would be a real family event.
Yeah.
And then to do, and to do history and cultural, you know, imagery also would be just great.
Yeah, I'd be open to any of those. I just want to be mindful of that, but that's all I got for you, and thank you guys again.
Okay.
Thank you. Ms. Jenix, looks like all the questions were covered, but I have a couple things that I'd like to ask you. You mentioned something about the pricing of those murals. How do you gauge if it's the right price or not?
Well, as I said.
Is it some kind of a crate? Do you, that you follow, or?
Yeah, the, you know, the big one that we had was the historic mural, and that was priced at $50,000, which is a significant amount of money.
Yeah.
And I was given backup and, you know, materials, which I didn't include for the, in the interest of time, you know, about appraisals and value and artist credentials that, you know, supported not only that price but something even higher. So that was how that one was determined. The other, the other murals, again, it would be a sliding scale, again, depending on the complexity of the mural, qualifications of the artists. And then going back to the, you know, the Artist Alley, they would be, you know, maybe 15, 17, 50 each. And Jules just reminded me, we were also thinking about incorporating a solar lighting component back in the alley to, you know, to kind of play on what Commissioner Carr did on hibiscus, but using, you know, some kind of solar spotlights on the alleyway.
I like the fact that you're going to be using holographics and using technology. I think it's neat, and it takes us to another level.
Mm-hmm.
And let you change in those pictures as you, as often as you want to. For the record, I'd like to comment that for the 2020, the budget is $172,000, which I think is very aggressive.
Mm-hmm.
And that's going to leave us with $122,600 for remaining on the budget for next year's projects to come. So I think it's very aggressive, and I'm looking forward to seeing them completed.
Well, I think in most budgets and negotiations, I think we went high, so that if we come in low, we look good. So, but if we go over, then we look bad, so I think we want to look good. So I think we're going to try to be as frugal as possible when we, you know, put these things out for bid and actually contract people to do them.
Well, thank you. We are now going to the public comments. Do we have any public comments on this item?
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. My name is Coast of Adi Kyotis. I live at 538 West Cedar Street, Tarpon Springs. I've sat in on a couple of meetings with the Public Arts Committee, and you've got an excellent group of people. They're enthusiastic and creative, and as you can tell from the asterisk items on their art projects that they've got planned, they really value your guidance, and I would hope that that would continue in the future. I think that's paid off. The workshop helped quite a bit to focus the Public Arts Committee, and I think that continued support would be very helpful. The one thing that I also wanted to mention that I didn't see, that I would hope that we would continue, was the artistic sponge docks gateway that was discussed. I know there was really not any conclusion on the approach to take on that. I think there was discussed about taking an off-the-shelf idea, but I think the consensus was to move forward with something more artistic. And even though that item may not come out of the Public Arts Committee budget, I would hope that you would utilize the Public Arts process, since they're very skilled and adept at working with artists, to develop the concept for the sponge docks gateway. I do know that there was some discussion as well of consulting with Mr. Chris Dill, a very well-known artist here in Tarpon Springs. I think maybe his availability might be an issue, but the reason I'm bringing these things up is I think you had a very good workshop, and I would like to see a couple of those important things that weren't mentioned this evening continue, and that we don't lose track of that either. As I said, the Public Arts Committee are very enthusiastic and creative, and I wouldn't cut them short even with putting, giving them the responsibility of doing a sponge docks entryway. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments on this item? Any other public comments on this item? You're not? You want to comment?
Yeah, I just want to comment on what Mr. Adi Kyotis said.
Okay.
Okay. You mentioned the entryway sign to the sponge docks or the, some artistic entryway. I did talk to Christopher Still. He's going to be going to Greece for a month, but he said he would be willing to do some consultation on some type of artwork based on what we're looking for. And I think, you know, one of the discussions we had before we started this is where we're going to put it because of us, you know, maybe looking at city property instead of the property that's owned right now by the group that own the Poppets Building. So I don't know if you want to say anything more to that, Mark, but that was our next step, I think, was to look at.
Yes, and we're looking at that and trying to give different options, hopefully both options closer to the corner and an alternate option. So we're looking at all options available, and then it's just going to be how big the base is going to be. That's going to, that'll be the question of what area we have, but we're working on that right now.
Okay, great to like move on with it. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other public comments on this item? You're not? Thank you. We are now going to the consent agenda. The item number five is the minutes. A, May 21st, 2019, work session. Six, satisfaction and release of liens. Number seven is the attorney fees. Trask, A, Trask and Dynall invoice June 2019, and B is Johnson and Jackson, the invoice 4537, 4538, and 4539. Number nine is the special events. A is the Hippie Fest, August 10, 2019. Number nine is the award file number 190069-C-CM, tires and related services utilizing the Florida Sheriff's Association bid number 19-T-R-S-21.0. Number 10 is the award file number 190119BJJ, the Decanese Boulevard, title flooding improvements. And number nine is renew file number 180023-C-RS, fire equipment, parts, supplies, and services. And number 12 is the increase file, RFQ number 160132-SJJ, city engineer of record. Number 13, A is to reject all bids for bid number 190072-B-CM, paving and micro reserve facing, and number, and B is the award file number 190097-C-CM, pavement and roadway infrastructure rehabilitation utilizing City of Largo bid number 17-C-589. Number 14 is Select George F. Young Incorporated for RFQ number 190091-SJJ, survey services, continuing services. And number 15 is the award bid number 190102BJJ, reverse emesis water facility generator distribution upgrades. And I'd like to pull number 10. Do you like to pull any other item?
Yes.
Which one?
12, 14, 15, and then I have a comment on 13.
12?
12, 14, and 15.
Yes, I'd like to have some comments and questions on 10 and 13.
Yeah, I'm going to pull that.
10, 13.
Yeah, I also had a comment on 12, but we're pulling it.
Number 12, yeah. Any comments on the item number five, six, seven, eight, nine, and 11? Any public comments on this item? You're not? Chair will detain the motion.
Motion to approve those items.
Second.
And roll call, please.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Seaver?
Yes.
Mayor Alhuzis?
Yes, thank you. Number 10.
If you want, I'll bring Bob Robertson up. He can do all of them but one. You're going to do the pay? Well, wait, let's bring Bob. Wrong order. Since he's number 10 and he's got all the other ones but the one Tom Function's bringing up, I'll leave you up there, take all the ones except 13. Right?
That'll work.
Those are all yours, right?
Sure.
Okay.
Item number 10, this is an item that I've been waiting for a long, long time. Stormwater project to improve flooding on the Decanese Boulevard related to the seawater rise. Mr. Function and Bob, we've been talking about this for many, for many months, I will say several years now, that we are now going to install three check valves to reduce the impact of the street flooding on the Decanese Boulevard. Can you please tell us the locations, where you're going to place them, and how, if you just can describe what's going to happen?
Yes, sir. So, thank you. I'm Bob Robertson, Project Administration Department Director, and the project you're talking about is the installation of three check valves on the sponge docks on the Decanese. The locations are Athens, there's three stormwater outfalls that flow from the south to the north to the river, and those, those outfalls are at Athens, Hope, and Arfaris. And the installation of these check valves essentially prevents tidal, high tide flow, backflow up into the streets. This is what we call the sunny day flooding. This doesn't happen too much, but it can exacerbate effects when we have heavy rainfall. So this is a first step in a multi-phase approach to, to deal with the flooding on the sponge docks. We're very excited to get this one going, especially since it came in under our budget.
Thank you. The, the storm pipes from the street to the river, are those going to be replaced and increase the diameter?
That'll be the second phase. That's a major infrastructure improvement that'll be required, but for now, we're going to start with the check valves, but you're absolutely right. The upgrading of the inlets and the conveyance system, the storm pipes that get the water in that drainage basin to the river are going to need to be upgraded, too, as a future phase.
Thank you, Bob. And just recently, we installed two more check valves in different locations. Can you share that with us?
Yeah, you're talking about the check valves at, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Mayor. Go ahead.
That's fine.
Okay. You're talking about the installation at Bayshore and Sunset, and I think the other one is the one, excuse me?
The canal.
Right. I think Tom can talk to you about the, how those are operating, but I know those were, at least the Bayshore and Sunset was done in-house. Did we do the one at the canal or was it at County?
Yeah, Tom, come on up. I forgot you were involved in that also.
Yeah, let me get a little help on that one. Tech team.
They pulled most of Bob's items, so.
That's okay.
Tom Function, Public Works Director. Yeah, we installed the first one in-house on Bayshore and Sunset. Yeah, we installed the first one in-house, uh, on Bayshore and Sunset, and that's how we got the, uh, worked with the engineer, and that's how we ended up doing the design to put these out to bid. Uh, we also put the one in at the canal and River, and, and, uh, North Riverside, or North Spring, whichever you want to call it. Uh, we put that one in-house too, uh, using, uh, our own personnel. These ones have to be bid out because it's a little more involved.
How they work? They're working okay?
Uh, so far, so good. Yes, yes. Uh, very well. We're very pleased. Very pleased.
Good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you there. Any other comments?
Yes, uh, I'm glad to see this brought forward. I'm sorry that Andy has gone because this is something we've been discussing, uh, for a long time and, and the merchants, uh, I'm a merchant on the docks, so obviously it affects me as well. So, uh, I'm very pleased that we, uh, we're moving forward with this. I saw that, uh, that this will be completed in sixty days. Uh, when will we proceed? When will it start? Do we have a start date?
Well, as soon as we get your approval, um, we'll get the contracts. I believe this is... No, you're, you're authorizing the, the bid, so we'll have to, I think we have to come back with the contract for signature. You don't have the contract in your signature page tonight, do you? I don't think so. Okay, so with, with your approval, they'll get the contract finalized.
Yeah.
It'll be signed by your, uh, the mayor and the city attorney. And, well, we'll have the kickoff meeting, get the project started. I'm hoping we can get it done before season.
Good.
That's, that's the plan.
Hopefully.
That's, I mean, we're trying to move it as fast as we can.
Yeah, so maybe by the end of the summer?
I hope so.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item?
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners, Coast of Attic Koteis, 538 West Cedar Street. I'm very, very happy to see that this is done. Uh, this is being done and, uh, and thank you, Mayor Commissioners, for doing that. Um, I didn't have a chance to look at the, uh, design or anything. I do have extensive experience with the Sponge Docks areas and, uh, barnacles and oysters are very, uh, that growth is very, uh, aggressive down there. And I would hope, uh, and maybe Bob can answer this, and I'm sure it's been covered, that these are serviceable just in case of any kind of fouling with barnacles or oysters. Um, I think the initial operation is always great, but it's long-term. That is what makes them pay for themselves. Um, and, um, I'm not sure at what elevation that these are going to be placed, whether they'll only see, um, water at flood tides or whether they'll actually be, um, submerged, um, in a tidal area where they'll be routinely awash of salt water. That would make a tremendous difference. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Are there any public comments? You're none? Broke, uh, I need a motion.
Motion approved, uh, item number ten.
Hi, just had a question. I saw Bob shaking his head on barnacles and where the, I was just wondering whether he could expound on that before we make a motion. Okay, second.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, so to address that issue, we specifically had the, uh, engineer look at installing them just downstream of, of a stormwater, um, catch basin of an inlet box so that we could pull the grate and jet them clean. Um, it's a little more expensive for actually, for us to do it that way. The alternative would have been to put it at the end of pipe where you'd get a lot more of the barnacle growth, but it makes them harder to maintain.
Right.
So, we opted for the solution so we could maintain them on a regular basis.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Right?
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Mayor Alahuzis.
Yes, thank you. Next item is number ten. Increase RFQ number sixteen zero one thirty-two SJJ, city engineer on record. Commissioner Carr?
We just, uh...
Just read it. I think it's, it's twelve.
I'm twelve.
You read it correctly. Um, thank you, Mayor. Bob, if you can just, uh, I had some questions done on this one a couple of years ago when I was first elected. Uh, obviously, this is a significant amount of money that we're spending on engineering services. I just want, um, you to elaborate a little bit further on there. Um, my question in the past was if we're spending this much on engineering services, why don't we just hire an engineering department in our own city and have them staffed? And we could fluctuate staffs up and down depending on the workloads. Uh, so can you just touch on this a little bit for me so I have a better understanding?
Sure, I'd be happy to. So, uh, the summary of the item, just real quick for, for the, for the camera, for the audience, is that we're asking for an increase to our existing engineer of record contract that allows us to use engineering services on a continuing basis. Um, we have, we have two contracts under this authorization, uh, with two engineering firms. So, it's a five-year term, um, with annual contract, uh, upper limits that the board establishes for us as staff to use. Um, the current upper limit is five hundred thousand a year, and we're asking for an increase of two hundred thousand to bring that to seven hundred thousand to use with those two engineering firms. So, we're two and a half years into the, the current five-year authorization. And over that two and a half years, we've used just over a million dollars' worth of engineering services. Um, to put that in perspective, that's, that's, that's about four hundred and, it works out to about four hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars per year in engineering services. Now, if you compare that to, if we were to hire engineering staff and create our own engineering, um, department, um, you'd probably able, be able to get four, maybe five, um, engineers, uh, entry level, varying level degrees, um, including benefits and everything for, for that amount of money per year. Over the last two and a half years, the, we've done about twenty-seven projects or authorizations with our engineer record contract. And I went back and double-checked it. Um, the team that we were able to tap into was uh, forty-two engineers, ecologists, architects, surveyors, admin staff, specialists, um, that worked on our specific projects. That's not just the number of people that work for those firms. What I'm getting at is, um, we were able to get for the price of five engineers, forty-two, a staff of forty-two to work with. Um, I think that's a, a pretty good bargain if, if we're thinking about how much work that we are trying to do. This gives us a, access to expertise that we simply couldn't replicate with in-house staff. I hope that summarizes it for you.
Yeah, it does. Uh, and thank you. These, and help me understand too, an engineer, engineers specialize in certain trades or certain parts of engineering?
Certainly.
Like the same engineer might not do stormwater, but might not do the turn basin or may not do sign design. Am I right in that?
Absolutely. Yes, that's correct.
So, that's one thing we could, the city's able to do when they outsource it, is they're able to go and these specialties in and have someone that specializes in engineering.
That's exactly right.
Uh, when I look at the backup too, it looks like a, a significant amount of spend is for the Mango mirrors and Boulevard improvements. Um, the Anclot River turn basin, uh, design and permitting. So, those, that's a significant amount of that big chunk of change that we're talking about tonight. Um, or significant amount of dollars that are being spent. So, um, I, although it's hard for me to still understand that why don't we have more engineers on staff? I think this is a, a good move, uh, because of the ebbs and flows in the market. And I don't want to hold back any of the projects that were really on the cusp of completing and getting, uh, started. So, uh, I would support this one.
Thank you.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yeah, thank you again, and I just wanted to put it in more layman's terms because I, I confirmed this with, with you when I first saw this was that, um, it's not like, you know, they're just increasing their price or anything like that because this is a lot of money even for, um, for consultants with so many staff members. I just wanted to confirm that we were doing more projects with them and that's why the price is increasing. It's not an, um, an expensive issue. It, it's, it's more just we're actually doing and moving forward with more of our projects at the moment.
That's exactly right. We're doing more work.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Are there any public comments on this item number twelve? You're none? Broke, uh, I need a motion?
Motion to approve item twelve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Mayor Alahuzis.
Yes. Number thirteen, paving. Reject all bid for bid number nineteen zero zero seventy-two BCM, paving and micro, uh, resurfacing. And B is the award file number nineteen zero zero ninety-seven CCM, pavement and roadway infrastructure rehabilitation utilizing City of Largo, bid number seventeen C five eighty-nine. Commission ship.
Yes, um, I, I know that we've been talking about this for a while. Um, especially the micro surf, uh, surfacing. Um, you know, there's nine locations that, that, that need, uh, work.
Yes.
And, and some of these, you know, we, again, the residents have been complaining or concerned for a while. Uh, can we do any micro surfacing, uh, in-house?
Uh, no, it's kind of especially product, and the, the volume of asphalt here we couldn't possibly handle in-house. Micro surface is a little bit different than your regular one inch and a half surfacing that we usually use. Uh, it's much more, it's cost-effective and you can only use it on roads that have a good solid base onto it. Uh, once you start getting into ma- major potholes and things like that, the preliminary work you have to do with micro surfacing then gets a bit more expensive.
Yeah, I'm thinking of these alleys that, uh...
Alleys will be regular pavement, uh, inch and a half pavement.
So, they will be paved?
Yes, they'll be inch and a half, uh, S, SP nine, yes, ma'am.
Okay, great. And so, uh, you'll go back out to bid after, uh, we approve this? Or you, you come back with more bids or when will, what's the timeline for?
Well, this contract we're going to pig, the contract for piggybacking off is this Largo contract which ends the end of two thousand nineteen, uh, October one of two thousand nineteen. Uh, so we, we can either, next time we come up another, uh, list, you can either rebid it or use a, a piggyback contract. The advantage about the piggyback contract is you're working with volume. Luckily, there's a lot more paid than we do, so that's why we got the lower prices off of them than going out for ourselves.
So, we would have to rebid before October?
No.
Unless we piggyback?
No, I'd have to, uh, once I start this, once I start this project with that contract, we'll be able to finish this whole, this list. And any other ones we may, that may come up, uh, in the meantime. But after October one, we have to go back and either rebid a new paving contract or piggyback off another existing contract.
Okay, I guess my point is we, we need to get it done, so, uh, as soon as we can.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Tom, uh, were you rejecting this bid and we saving how much, did you say?
Uh, a little over eighty thousand dollars.
So, I think it's worth it doing it. Any other comment?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Uh, I just want to bring up a, obviously it's come up a couple of times already with the other mayor and commissioners, uh, about, um, going out to big and then use it, utilizing a piggyback. Uh, there's been some discussion in the past. Uh, I'm encouraged that we just didn't go and use the piggyback, uh, with another city. I'm encouraged that we bid it out ourselves, and this is a prime example to say the bids that we receive back are higher than what another contract was. So, we evaluated the bids, gave local businesses the opportunity to bid on it, and then we realized that they're all higher than what we could go along and piggyback with the City of Largo. So, I want to say thank you to the city manager and thank you, Tom, and the procurement team for, for doing that because I think it's an important aspect, um, to do the whole evaluation that way.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item? You're not? I need a motion for, uh, item number thirteen, paving.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Your roll call.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Mayor Alahuzis.
Yes, thank you. Next item is number fourteen, Select George Young Incorporated for the RFQ number nineteen zero zero ninety-one, Survey Services Continuing Services. Commissioner Carr?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Bob, just, uh, I know we talked about this also, but it was wanting to put on the record. I believe this is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that you're asking for approval tonight. Um, now, can you just talk a little bit about, um, in the past, what the city has spent, uh, for surveyings, or for surveying services? And a little bit about what they actually do, uh, for the city as well?
Sure. Um, so this is another continuing services contract in the same vein as the engineer record contract that I previously discussed with you. We have spent somewhere in the order of between thirty to sixty thousand in a year. This last year was, was just about thirty thousand dollars. Um, the purpose is for us to provide, have, for us as staff to have direct access to surveying services. Um, we would have the ability to sub that through our engineer record if we wanted to, but this cuts out the middleman and gives us direct access and, um, lets us get survey work done for verifying boundaries, uh, topographic survey, subsurface utility engineering survey if we need it. Um, even marine, uh, survey is in their, in their scope of work. So, it's just another tool in our toolbox.
Okay. Just because there's an upper limit of a hundred and fifty doesn't mean that the city's planning on spending a hundred and fifty, right?
That's correct. You're just establishing the upper limit for us. And, and any work that we do is, is included in budgets for the, the different departments that you will go through and review during your budget process, um, or parts of projects.
Yeah, thank you.
Are there any commission comment? Are there any public comments on this item? You're none? Need a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Your roll call.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Mayor Alahuzis.
Yes. Number fifteen is the award, um, bid number nineteen zero one zero two BJJ, reverse osmosis water facility generator distribution upgrade. Commissioner Carr?
Yeah, I just want to touch on this. Uh, I know I gave, uh, props to the procurement department just recently, but, uh, this is actually a little bit different. I would like to ask city staff to look into this a little bit further. Uh, in the past, it looks like this was out to bid, no one bid on it, and then they reached out to, um, uh, businesses to actually bid on this. And I think it's advantageous from the city's perspective is to not just put information out for bid. Again, I'm in procurement and I manage about six hundred and fifty million dollars a year in spend. Uh, I think it's important that you actually reach out to businesses that fall into, uh, these categories, especially if we're going to spend a significant amount of money. So, I would like to encourage our city manager to work with our procurement team on a way to reach out, especially to Pinellas County, uh, South Pasco, and especially Tarpon Springs companies. When we have these items come up for bid, uh, this one pertains to the, um, the generator distribution upgrades, uh, and the circuit breaker, uh, in that aspect. I believe that's all electrical. Am I right in that, Bob?
Yes, sir.
Um, I, um, I do know I've, I've dealt with some, um, some, uh, generator issues at my work currently and getting some different companies in for bids. And, um, although the sat, uh, I think the city managers let me know in the past that we put, we post these for anyone to go and bid on, but it's not like everybody understands that these are out to bid. So, I think it's, I think it would really behoove the city to be proactive and to really advertise and ask the procurement team to call and reach out to some local, uh, businesses to try to get some additional bids on these. Because the more bids we get, typically we're going to have a lower price. Uh, for example, this bid alone only had two people or two companies bid on it. Uh, I do think it should be a minimum also that we at least have three to four bids as well to move forward on an item. Thank you.
Any commission comment? Are there any public comments on the item fifteen? You're none? I need a motion on item fifteen.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Your roll call.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Mayor Turefanny? I'm sorry. Mayor Alahuzis.
Yes. That concludes the, uh, consent agenda, and we go to, uh, special consent agenda, which is the item number sixteen. To authorize a settlement of lien for, uh, four twenty-five Wayfair Court for, uh, Papa Thanosios. City Attorney, if you present this item.
Yes, I'm bringing this to you. Um, this is a code enforcement lien settlement, um, that has come up on the property located at four twenty-five Wayfair Court. The property was cited seventeen times over the past twenty years for different code violations. There were two outstanding code fines, uh, from June of two thousand and seventeen and October of two thousand and seventeen. The property owner passed away within the last couple of years. Subsequent to that, I received a phone call from the son of the owner of the property wanting to resolve the outstanding code enforcement liens. Um, over the last couple of months, I've been negotiating with the son. And I have, um, before you tonight, an offer of settlement of these two code enforcement liens for seven thousand, seven hundred dollars. The outstanding liens as of May fifteenth were fifteen thousand, four seventy-two, twenty-seven. I think that the seven thousand, seven hundred dollars settlement for these liens, um, is, is a good settlement. Um, it prevents the city from having to litigate these issues, and it also saves the city, uh, the attorney's fees and court costs that we would, um, incur as a direct result of bringing these foreclosure actions on this property. So, I'm asking for your authority to accept seven thousand, seven hundred dollars for these two code enforcement liens on four twenty-five Wayfair Court, and I'd be happy to answer any questions for you.
Are there any commission comments, questions? Are there any public comments on this item? The chair will detain the motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Mayor Alahuzis.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number seventeen is a special event, pole festival, staff report.
This was just brought before you because this is a change in the special event. Uh, we talked about special events before. We told you that that happened. We bring them for you. So, the merchants association is here tonight. Um, the changes is moving from Orange Street to Tarpon Avenue. So, the merchants are here. If you have any questions on about the changes, uh, in this event before you say it. That's the difference why this is on special consent as opposed to the consent agenda because of those changes.
Any commission comments, Commissioner Carr?
Thanks. Is there someone I can speak to, please? No.
Good evening. I'm Carol Rodriguez with the Tarpon Springs Merchants Association.
Carol, thanks for coming up. You all do a lot of great events throughout the year, so I want to say thank you for promoting Tarpon Springs and the small businesses at Tarpon Springs as well. I just want to clarify a few items in the application. It talks about the event being from the fourth to the fifth. And then if we go down to closure of city parking lots, it talks about Orange Street Parking Lot will be closed from the third to the seventh. Was that an error or is that correct?
That's correct. We need to put up a tent on Thursday to house the band and tables and chairs. And we've done that for the last four years.
Okay. And then something new, it looks like Mother Meers Parking Lot is gonna be closed this year compared to last year, right?
Correct. Mother Meers will be closed because on the fourth, it's our first Friday. And then on Saturday, we still won't be needing to use it.
Okay. As, I know there's some businesses downtown that complain about parking on busy Saturdays and even throughout the week. Has there been discussions with the hair salons and some of the businesses that don't necessarily benefit from the large crowds and like the restaurants in these situations?
They have had the schedule since January. On other events, they have called. We do usually sometimes provide a shuttle service. There is parking. It is gonna be tough maybe for a couple of them, but the majority of the residents and people coming in from out of town to the event, I think outweighs a little bit of inconvenience. They could maybe schedule their clients a little bit differently.
Is there any additional parking anywhere else, like out by nineteen at all for this event?
No, but I could look into it.
Okay. It may be a good idea, especially since Mother Meers is...
The splash park, parking, and we advertise all the time about that.
Okay. Yeah, I know in the past Tarpon Tavern, or the Tarpon Tower has been used for like the craft show. It may be advantageous for the organization to look at that if that's an option to help or alleviate. Because obviously when you take out the two main parking lots in downtown, it gets pretty tight pretty quick. So that'd be my only concern, but I've attended this event almost every year it's been here and it's a nice event to have in October. So I'm excited about it. So thank you for clarifying that for me.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item? You're none? Thank you for everything you guys did.
You're welcome, thank you.
Roll call. Excuse me, I need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Mayor Alahuza.
Yes. We are now going to the ordinance of resolutions. Item number eighteen is the ordinance two thousand nineteen dash fifteen Firefighters Pension Trust Fund Amendment. This is a second reading. The city attorney will read the ordinance.
This is ordinance two thousand nineteen dash fifteen and ordinance of the city of Tarpon Springs further amending the city of Tarpon Springs Firefighters Pension Trust Fund adopted pursuant to ordinance number two thousand dash eighteen. As subsequently amended, amending section one definitions by amending the definitions of credited services, firefighter and spouse, amending section two membership, amending section four finances and fund management, amending section eight disability, amending section fifteen maximum pension, amending section seventeen miscellaneous provisions, amending section twenty-five deferred retirement option plan drop, adding section twenty-eight supplemental benefit component for special benefits, chapter one seventy-five share accounts, providing for codification, providing for severability of provisions, repealing all ordinances in conflict herewith and providing an effective date. That was the second final reading of ordinance two thousand nineteen dash fifteen by title only and it was advertised on June fourteenth, two thousand nineteen.
Thank you. This is the second reading. We got any new information on that?
No, there are no changes.
Any commission comment?
No.
Are there any public comments on this item? You're none? Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call please.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Mayor Alahuza.
Yes. Number nineteen is a resolution two thousand nineteen dash sixteen Fiscal Year two thousand nineteen Budget Resolution. The city attorney will read the resolution.
This is resolution two thousand nineteen dash sixteen, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending the budget for fiscal year two thousand eighteen dash nineteen. That was a reading of resolution two thousand nineteen dash sixteen by title only.
Staff reporter Mr. LeCours, see Mr. Harry is ready.
Good evening, good evening Mayor and Commissioners. Budget Resolution two thousand nineteen dash sixteen is being brought before you to budget for items that were not previously budgeted for in the fiscal year two thousand nineteen budget. All items are listed in the cover letter. The major items are capital projects in the penny fund, some vacation sellback funding that was done during the holidays, with the balance of the items being some operational items that have come up during the year. No general fund, unassigned fund balances being used in the resolution and if there's any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Ron, thank you for everything you do. The question that I have is on the on the water plant electric changes. Is that including the connection to the solar panels that we're gonna be getting?
The solar panels are separate from that. This is just the additional electric that they're having more demand being going through the pumps at the water plant and it's causing them an increased demand on electricity. But I know they got the solar project out there and what they're hoping is the solar project will help reduce the cost of electricity out there going through there.
Okay, so that's not included in that?
No.
I've got a couple of questions. It could be for Mark or for Ron. There's a couple of items, Extend Pinellas Trail Funding Penny Fund. I'm not familiar with that. Is that something we're gonna be seeing? Or did I just miss that in a meeting in the past?
Well, that's been on the budget for the last couple of years, that project. This is the engineering work for the Extend Pinellas Trail.
Okay.
It's not the construction part of it.
Okay, it's engineering work then. So is that engineering work going through the city engineer, am I assuming?
No, it's a consultant with that.
Okay, so I guess that's approved previous, before I got on, I'm assuming. Okay. Additional maintenance to change out lights to LED lights, is that the streetlights? Or are those lights in-house in the properties that we, the city owns?
No, they've got with Duke Energy a project of going through all the streetlights and changing them all to LED, and so this is a cost for that.
I would like to just make a comment on that. I do appreciate the brighter lights, but I do feel like I'm at an airport most days or most nights when I come home with the white light compared to the softer lights that are currently throughout the city that are being currently replaced. I know I've talked to Tom about that in the past and he said the softer lights are more expensive, but I know I've gotten comments from residents and I would imagine other commissioners have as well about these lights that they're very sharp, they're very bright, around the bayou areas or on the water areas. When you go out on your front porch, it's literally shining into your front yard and hitting your house, they're that bright. So I would like the city to evaluate this, city manager if you could, and look at, even if it costs a little bit more, I think it would be worth looking at additional shields and worth looking at a softer light than the bright white daylight lights that are currently being installed across the city. Thank you.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes, that's a good point. I was wondering what kind of lights we were gonna be using, if they will be the softer LED. It's a great idea to change them all out, the LED, but those bright lights, and I don't know what your estimate was on. Was it the softer lights or...
That was just the estimate I got from Public Works on the cost of changing out the lights so far.
Yeah, we may want to just see what type of lights those are.
To try to go to the softer lights?
Yes. Because we do get concerned citizens who think that those other lights are too bright. Last year, we budgeted some money for marketing, about thirty thousand dollars. Where did that money, is that, could that be included in here? Where did that money come from?
Well, that money is already in the original budget. We had the thirty-five thousand, it was in the original budget.
So that was budgeted for again?
Yes.
Thanks.
Yeah, I'd like to echo the concerns that citizens have had with the new lights just being too bright. Some people, it's almost like being at like a football field, just kind of glaring right into their windows. But also, I just wanted to know, I was curious for the welcome signs. I believe that's like a hundred and twenty thousand. Where, are those just gonna go where our standard welcome signs are right now, like along the highway and stuff like that? Where are those welcome signs going?
Those were the plans. That's what I got with Bob, the project director, and they said, I believe there was seven welcome signs that were being put out in strategic spots throughout the city. I guess mostly on Highway nineteen and on alternate nineteen. But I think it was like six or seven of them.
It's that project that we're working on with FDOT to get the approval on.
Okay, thank you.
For all the entrance ways and of course the entrance on Tarpon Avenue, the two bigger ones on Tarpon Avenue.
Okay, yeah, I was just curious about that. And then do we know what caused the increase at the water plant by a hundred thousand dollars, the electric use increase? Was there like an influx of residents using it or do we have any kind of reason behind that?
Yeah, when getting with public services, they said there's quite the increase in demand going through the pumps at the water plant, which is causing the increase in electricity. And that's why, we're bringing it before the mayor was a solar, so they're hoping that once they get the solar project going, that'll help decrease that electricity flowing through those pumps.
Okay, thank you.
Just to add that, we also increased the number of the wells as well. Any other questions? Are there any public comments on this item?
Peter Protas, nine oh one Bay Shore Drive. When Commissioner Terapanyi had the program to put the lights around the bayou and we talked about them, the city has, seems to have forgotten and the police also made a comment. We put the brighter lights because of the crime in the park. We put the brighter lights because of the crime and problems we had in the restrooms. We put the brighter lights to keep people from parking down there, walking around and getting in trouble at night. That's why we have the bright lights. So we have to think about the safety in the bayou area and keep the bright lights because the softer lights didn't illuminate as much as the brighter ones. And I think if we look at the records of the crime, when we didn't have them and we got the lights and the bright lights, how much it's gone down, especially in the public bathrooms and in the band shelter. So before you go to change them, you've got to think of the safety of the residents and the people who walk there at night and the people who live there, especially when the motel was there and we had all the drug activity there. We still have crime and that's why Mayor Alahuza, the bright lights were put in at that time.
Remember that.
And I would certainly go with the recommendation that the police department had about the lights for safety.
Mayor?
Thank you. Any other public comments on this item?
Mayor, can I have a clarifying comment?
Sure.
Thank you for the public comment. I was referring to the actual streetlights and not the lights within Craig Park. Okay, thank you.
The chair will detain the motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Mayor Alahuza.
Yes. Item number twenty is the ordinance two thousand nineteen dash sixteen repeal taxi operators permit. This is the first reading. City Attorney, if you please read the ordinance.
This is ordinance two thousand nineteen dash sixteen and ordinance of the Board of Commissioners of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, repealing division three title taxicabs of article five of chapter eleven of the Tarpon Springs Code of Ordinances and providing for an effective date this ordinance. The second reading of this ordinance will be on July twenty-third, two thousand and nineteen and it will be published in the Tampa Bay Times by title only on July fifth, two thousand and nineteen.
Thank you. I think this is necessary to do. We must treat the taxi companies the same as we do Uber and Lyft, so I think it's something we should do. Are there any commission comments? Are there any public comments on this item? You're none? The chair will detain the motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Your roll call.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Mayor Alahuza.
Yes, thank you. We are now going to item number twenty, twenty-one is the application nineteen dash fifteen for seven twenty-one South Distant Avenue. This is the first reading. Item number twenty-one A and twenty-one B are related, will be discussed together, but we're going to vote separately. Item number twenty-one B is quasi-traditional. The twenty-one A ordinance two thousand, excuse me, the ordinance two thousand nineteen dash twelve amend the future land use. The city attorney will read the title and he will explain the quasi-judicial process.
I'll read the quasi-judicial procedures first. This is a quasi-judicial proceeding where the Board of Commissioners acts in a quasi-judicial rather than a legislative capacity. At a quasi-judicial hearing, it is not the board's function to make law, but rather to apply law that has already been established. In a quasi-judicial proceeding, the board is required by law to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented at the hearing and apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria contained in the Code of Ordinances in order to make a legal decision regarding the application before it. The board may only consider evidence at this hearing that the law considers competent, substantial and relevant to the issues. If the competent, substantial and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has met the criteria established in the Code of Ordinances, then the board is required by law to find in favor of the applicant. By the same token, if the competent, substantial, relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has failed to meet the criteria established in the code, then the board is required by law to find against the applicant. I'll go ahead and swear in everyone that's gonna speak on this issue and then I'll go ahead and read the ordinances by title only. Anyone that's gonna speak on these two agenda items, ordinance two thousand nineteen dash twelve, two thousand nineteen dash thirteen, if you can stand up, raise your right hand, be sworn under oath. You swear the testimony you're about to give is gonna be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Ordinance two thousand nineteen dash twelve, we'll read it by title only. An ordinance of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending the future land use map for approximately zero point three three acres of property located at seven twenty-one South Distant Avenue. Lots eleven and twelve, block two, Toby's Acres. Application nineteen dash thirty-five from ROG Residential Office General to RM Residential Medium. Providing for findings and providing for an effective date. There will be a second reading of this ordinance after Pinellas County has completed its review. It was published in the Tampa Bay Times by title only on May thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Heather Earler and staff to this, or your planning director, staff to this application. This application is for Robert Reynolds. Again, it's for seven twenty-one South Distant Avenue. As you can see on the maps attached, there's a small piece of property located on the corner of Distant and Mango that is, it's currently a residential office. It's had a history as an office property and it was picked up when the maps were originally adopted. So it's been office for some time and your office category allows both residential and office uses. Essentially, the applicant is requesting this change in the future land use map and in the zoning map to allow for subdivision of the property so that he can establish a second residence on the property. There's currently a single family residence on there. Staff's concern is really with the basis for your comprehensive plan. Your comprehensive plan in this area doesn't really support the R sixty zoning district. It is a variety of different uses there. They're a little bit more intense uses. And this is a transitioning area. This is the area, the corner actually, where the road is actually gonna get established when Meers is connected. So the land use, or the land use is one issue and that's being just amended to allow for that density at a smaller lot size, to allow for the subdivision. Really, the concern is the basis for the R sixty and R seventy zoning districts. They're meant to be neighborhood conservation districts, so those districts when they were established were established for a very unique reason. To recognize the existing neighborhoods and patterns that existed on the ground when the zoning code was originally established. So while theoretically he would need the zoning category in order to get the lot sizes, staff is not supportive of this particular application for that reason because the intention of this district currently is for recognizing existing neighborhoods. This is not an existing neighborhood, this is adding an additional lot. While there's residential, single family residential in the area and it's not a necessarily compatibility issue, it's really the construction of the code for that particular zoning district is really the concern that staff has here. And it doesn't meet the existing zoning pattern, or the existing land use pattern that you've got out there. There's some issues and questions of what's gonna happen in that area as the roads get connected, what kind of transition you're gonna, is going to occur. And there's a variety of different uses in that area. So with that, that's the reason why staff is... So with that, that's the reason why staff is not supportive of this current change. There is an additional step in this particular process. This is not just going to be a local amendment. They would have to amend the countywide plan as well because it's on the countywide plan as office, so they're going to have to go to the county for also approval should this move forward tonight. The planning board saw this application, and they actually had no concerns of that. They overturned staff's recommendation and recommended approval. So with that, I can answer any questions that you have, but the backup is pretty extensive on this application. So if you have any questions, specific questions, I'd be glad to answer them. And the applicant, I believe, is present here tonight if he'd wish to speak.
Now would be the opportunity for you to ask questions of staff if you have it. And if no questions of staff, then we'd have the applicant make a presentation if the applicant would like to do that. Any questions from the commission?
I was just, excuse me. I understand that you're not an approval. What was the decision for planning and zoning to approve, I think pretty much unanimously?
Well, planning and zoning doesn't really have a concern with residential in the area, but they're also not looking at the construction of your code. They're really looking at, well, what's the impact for the residential? And from a theoretical perspective, residential doesn't have, that's not where my concern is. My concern is really in the construction of your documentation and the intention of that section of code. So that's really what it is. I just had one other thing that I just wanted to add because there were two errors in the staff report. One was on, and I just want to make this correction, on page seven. It should say staff has received one email communication under the public correspondence section. And then also, just in the ordinance for two thousand nineteen thirteen, should this move forward under section two on the second page, we would need to add a line there that would just say shall be rezoned to R sixty-one and two family, which is what you would actually be doing under that ordinance. So I just want to make those two corrections.
Commissioner Carr?
Thanks, Mayor. City Planner Heather. So this is currently plotted though as two lots, correct?
It is the underlying, they've been combined into a single lot, and under your code, once you're combined into a single lot, the underlying plat essentially goes away. So the plating is shown as two lots, but it's not two lots. It was combined into a single lot.
Okay, but originally it was plotted as two lots.
Correct.
And then the properties behind and next to it are similar sizes?
Correct.
Okay. And then the RM is about a, less than, about a block away where there's current RM zoning or land use, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I don't have any, well, can you also help me understand then what the redevelopment of Mango, Mears corridor area? What you're seeing or what your thoughts are from a staff perspective of redevelopment or some of those areas that you were talking about?
Sure, so sure. You have two potential roads essentially that could potentially be connected. The first one is imminent for connection, which is that connection for Mears, the section between Mears and Mango that's actually going to be connected as part of the Mears Town Center project. The other road coming into this area is distant itself, has that hiatus. So there's potentially, if that road ever got connected, there could be a very different pattern here. There is some open property in the area. The city's landfill is in the area that eventually could be developed with some other use than what's currently there. There's a lot of future options. And with the development pressure for a roadway connection, when that usually happens, you usually see interest in changing the density patterns and the land use patterns in the area. And I would hate to put a residential, another residential unit there just to have them now impacted further by, you know, some other requests to change to multifamily in the area, that type of thing. And that's, that area is primed for that. You've got an older mobile home park that at some point may be redeveloped. There's a lot of potential for change there.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Other questions?
Yeah, I just had a quick question regarding the size of it because I thought I understood it. But then when the two lots issue came up, it's point three-three acres in total, that being the single lot?
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to confirm that.
Correct. It was originally two, but then it was combined into one and developed as a single property.
Okay.
Is Mr. Reynolds here? Does Mr. Reynolds want to make a presentation to the commission? You want to make a presentation to the commission? No, okay. Okay. So at this point then, you would open it up to the public, Mayor. Anyone wishing to speak from the public on this particular issue? All right, sir, if you want to come down here, I need to swear you in. You can raise your right hand, be sworn under oath. You swear the testimony you're about to give is going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
If you could state your name and your address, please, and then make your presentation.
Andre Miles. I live at four thirty-three East Boyer Street, Tarpon Springs. They keep saying something about their intentions of the neighborhood. What does that mean? It's a neighborhood with a bunch of abandoned houses on it already. There's six houses on that street that nobody live in. And what I'm getting out of this is she gonna reject, or they're gonna reject his request for what might happen twenty years from now, they keep bringing up this trailer park. That's down the street. And it's a dump across the street, even if they connect these roads. What's that got to do with something that was already split at one time and somebody doing the same thing he doing to try to make it into a, whatever you keep calling it, um... What is it? It ain't residential now. What is it classified as?
Residential office.
Office. Well, at one point, it was already residential, and somebody had to change the office, right? So I don't understand what the problem is that he trying to put it back like it was. And their argument is it ain't keeping up with the intentions of the neighborhood. What does that mean? I'm trying to figure out they keep, what is the intentions of the neighborhood? It's already a residential neighborhood, so what is the intention that they keep bringing up these trailer parks and what might happen with the dump? Even if they build something there and those roads come together, you still gonna have the same neighborhood. So I just want to know whether they keep saying the intention, it ain't going with what they want. What is it that they want? It's already a neighborhood. There's houses there already. What, they gonna make the people that own the houses there now tear them down? And suit what they want because a main highway is gonna come through there? Don't make no sense. He ain't trying to do nothing but put it back like it was. He ain't telling them to, or asking them to change their code or law, or whatever it is they keep saying. Put it back like it was. That's all he asking. And I don't see the problem that's gonna be if he put another house there. If it was a two lots before, evidently there was a house there previous to it being an office space. There had to be a house there. Matter of fact, I know it was because I lived there. That's all I want to know.
Thank you. Any other public comment? So Mayor, at this point, we can close the public hearing and...
Back to us.
It's back to you for consideration of this ordinance that has been read by title only.
Thank you. I need to comment on that. On the page here, he has a spreadsheet on the surrounding zoning and existing users. If you look the zoning on the north side of the subject area, subject property, he says that it's a residential urban. East of it is residential urban. South is also residential urban. West is an institution, recreation, open space. And single-family residential. So to me, it makes more, it makes sense, and it's compatible already to what's there to change it to the residential area instead of keep it as the residential office. So I will support the application. Commissioner Donovan?
Yeah, I would support the application as well. I think, just looking at a map of the area, I think it still fits. Again, if staff wants to come back and make any further comments on it, they may, but I would support the application as well.
Any other comment?
I was just curious about the empty houses. Are they unoccupied that he was talking about?
Well, one of the houses, I know for sure, was related to the, to the sinkhole, not the apartment.
Okay. So it's primarily residential then?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions? Not, chair will detain the motion on the ordinance two thousand nineteen dash twelve, amending the future land use map.
For clarification, is this just A?
This is the twenty-one A, yes. That's the ordinance two thousand nineteen dash twelve.
I would move to make a motion to approve ordinance nineteen dash thirty-five A from residential office general to residential medium.
Okay, so we just need to clarify that. You're reading the application number as opposed to the ordinance number. It's ordinance twenty nineteen dash twelve, which includes application nineteen dash thirty-five. So you can just do a motion to approve ordinance two thousand nineteen dash twelve, and that would capture it.
Okay, so I'm making a motion to approve ordinance twenty nineteen dash twelve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Mayor Alahuzis.
Yes. For the item number twenty-one B, which is the ordinance two thousand nineteen dash thirteen, amending the zoning map. This is the first reading. I need a motion for that.
Let me go ahead and read that by title only. Ordinance two thousand nineteen dash thirteen, an ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending the official zoning map of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida for approximately zero point three-three acres of property located at seven twenty-one South Distant Avenue. Lots eleven and twelve, block two, Toby's Acres. Application nineteen dash thirty-five from RO Residential Office to R sixty-one and two family residential district, providing for findings and providing for an effective date. That was reading of ordinance twenty nineteen dash thirteen by title only. There will be a second reading after Pinellas County review. It has been advertised in the Tampa Bay Times on May thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen.
Need a motion?
Motion to approve ordinance twenty nineteen thirteen.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Mayor Alahuzis.
Yes, thank you. Tonight, we have a long agenda. We're going to take five minutes break. We'll be right back. Thank you.
You're leaving? Did you say you're leaving?
No, I said, okay. Good.
Only at the office.
We now reconvene the B O C meeting at eight thirty-seven P M. We go to the item number twenty-two. This is the ordinance two thousand nineteen dash fourteen. The application nineteen dash fifty-three, L D C tax amendment, hotel height. This is the first reading. City Attorney, if you please, read the ordinance.
Mayor Commissioners, ordinance two thousand nineteen dash fourteen, an ordinance of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending section one eleven point zero zero of Article seven of Appendix A, the Comprehensive Zoning and Land Development Code by adding the ability to appeal an approval of a certificate of approval, providing for severability and providing for an effective date. That was the first reading of ordinance twenty nineteen dash fourteen by title only. There'll be a second reading on July ninth, two thousand nineteen. It has been advertised on May thirty-first and will be advertised again on June twenty-eighth in the Tampa Bay Times.
And staff report.
Uh, good evening. Again, Heather Earler, Planning and Zoning Director and Staff to this application. So this application, um, came out of the necessity for, um, the height criteria in the, uh, ha- the Highway Business District is an issue for hotels specifically. So we're looking to amend a very specific section of that ordinance for dealing with the height of the hotels in highway business. And this is specifically based on, um, the adjac- the building adjacent that's planned to be going in, that you've, um, requested us to, uh, negotiate on your behalf, a developer agreement with the existing, um, development company that owns the Hampton Inn. This is adjacent to that. Um, essentially, they requested the variance. The variance failed. So as a result, our only option was to look at, you know, alternative for just hotels. And since Highway Business District is limited, um, on the Alt nineteen corridor, we're not so concerned because you're still gonna control the height that ultimately happens on any hotel that's proposed. So it's gotta work within the, the site diameter of the pri- of the pri- the site perimeter that whatever property comes in. In the case of this particular property on nineteen that we're looking to, uh, make this amendment to support, it works very well there. Um, it may not work on some of the other locations. And again, that height limitation is controlled at the time of site planning. So when you would see a site plan or if you would see a developer agreement, those restrictions on what you wanna see for the height can be put into those documents. So staff's not really concerned. And since we wanna really promote getting another hotel or several hotels would be even better. Um, this is one of, of hopefully a couple that will come. So that's really what the, the genesis of this particular application is. Uh, I can answer any questions you have, but that's the, the history of this particular application.
Heather, thank you. Um, the only question that I have, and then I'm, I'm gonna comment, is we do have some buildings already that, um, like the Tarpon Towers is over eighty feet, correct?
Correct.
And the, uh, there's a hotel right next to the subject property.
That's correct.
Which is the Hampton Inn. That's over fifty-five feet if I'm not mistaken.
I don't think it's a little less than that, and that was subject to a variance.
Okay. So, so this is something that we have done in the past. And, uh, as you said, in order for us to have hotels there and to make sure that, uh, that's, um, financially, um, feasible, we have to make sure that, uh, we give them the height in order for them to build a hotel. This is something we've been looking for a long time to have. This is an opportunity to do that. And, um, encouraging my, uh, fellow commissioners to support it. Permission, Carter?
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, Heather, can you just clarify? I know there's a little bit of highway business on Pinellas Avenue, but there's not space to build a hotel in that lot. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yeah, the, the, the size of the lot is really what dictates, um, the height of the hotel. So in the case of the one on nineteen, they're just constricted in s- in s- in size of that actual unit. There's not really any property that they can pick up. So in order for them to get and to make it marketable and economically feasible, they've gotta go up instead of going out. So potentially, if you were to receive an application on, um, the Alt nineteen corridor, likely they'd probably have to acquire property and do like land assembly and then change zoning to make something happen because most of the parcels that you have just aren't significant enough size to even fit what the, the type of facility we're talking about, um, on nineteen.
But it's got to be compatible to like the Alt nineteen corridor, correct?
Well, yeah, it would, you don't have the same compatibility question, but you would control during the site planning process what you want to approve. So if you had concerns with the applicant that, you know, this is not the right place for this particular, um, height or that type of thing, you would have the ability to control that during the site planning process because they come here for approval.
Okay.
There's no way you really to get a hotel on any of the properties that we currently have without coming before you.
Okay. So this is, uh, primarily highway business, U S nineteen corridor, correct?
Correct. It's hu- most of your highway business is on U S nineteen. There's a few places on Alt nineteen that have kinda crept in. But again, they're just, their lots are just not right for where the ho- where a hotel would wanna be anyway. They're kinda pushed out a little bit, or they're below the southern part of the city, kinda going towards Klosterman. They're just in odd locations.
Thank you.
Commissioner Donovan? No comment? Commissioner Seber?
Uh, yes, I, I approve this, uh, application. I, I know where that, uh, hotel is going. And, and future, uh, hotels or businesses, uh, will have to come before us during, uh, for their site plans. So I have no problem with this.
Are there any public comments on this item? Here and now. The chair will detain the motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Merrill Hoozus?
Yes. Next item is number twenty-three. This is the ordinance two thousand nineteen dash seventeen, the application nineteen fifty-six, vacation of right-of-way. This is the first reading.
This is also a quasi-judicial hearing. The same rules apply and procedures. I'm gonna go ahead and read this ordinance by title only. Ordinance two thousand nineteen dash seventeen, an ordinance of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, vacating and abandoning a portion of a ten-foot-wide utility easement along the north property line of Lot eleven of the Hidden Ridge Townhomes plat book, one twenty-nine, page seventy-one, providing for conditions, providing for findings, providing for proposed and future easements, providing for recordation in the public records of Pinellas County, and providing for an effective date. That was the first reading of this ordinance by title only. There will be a second reading on July ninth. Um, and it will be published in the Tampa Bay Times on June twenty-eighth. Anyone that's wishing to speak on this item, if you could stand up, raise your right hand and be sworn under oath? It's whether the testimony you're about to give is gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Okay, thank you. So sta- city staff can make presentation.
Again, Heather Earler, Planning and Zoning Director and Staff to this application. Um, this is an existing townhome that was built in two thousand and seven. And when it was built, it was built actually into the utility easement. So they're asking to essentially vacate this portion of the utility, of the utility and drainage easement to allow for clear title for tran- title transfer, um, because they're planning on selling the property. It was discovered, a matter of fact, this has been sold more than once. This is not the first end user of this particular unit. So it was sold and conveyed prior to this with this, uh, encumbrance. But the, the applicant is currently asking for this vacate to basically just clear the title so that he can move, move the property. Um, it meets all of the criteria. This is a plat vacation. It's a little different than a right-of-way vacation. It doesn't need to meet the same, uh, criteria. However, we met with, um, the Public Works Department and they don't have any concern that such a small portion of the, of the actual property. And the impact's already there because the structure is already there. So any water that wa- is going into that, um, drainage utility easement is going, currently going around the, the encroachment. Um, so we don't really have any concerns. Um, T R C approved this with, with no concerns. And, um, the planning and zoning, uh, the planning zone board does not see these applications. This is something that's specific to, um, B O C. So with that, we can answer any questions that you might have. But that's really what we're dealing with here is just a very small portion of an encroachment in an easement. We need to vacate that portion of the plat to allow the title transfer.
Heather, obviously, the, uh, the applicant needs to have a, a clear title. The contractor, developer who built this building, this, this property, this house, doesn't carry, doesn't have any responsibility for doing that?
At this point, it was built in two thousand and seven. They have long since mov- moved on. So, um, at this point, this end user was not the original end user. So they're gonna have a hard time tracking them down. Um, i- it's not something that the, the current owner really bears any responsibility for. It was, it was allowed to happen in the past. And so as a result, it needs to be addressed.
The building next door to that, does it have the same issue? Do you know?
Uh, the building next door to that, uh, this is the only one that I'm aware of that was built in an easement. But again, without surveys, I, I couldn't tell you that. I can't answer that question.
Any other question?
And now it'd be time for the applicant.
Wait, wait, wait.
Yeah, I just had a quick comment. Um, so back in two thousand and seven, was it just the developer was unaware of it? And the city didn't, didn't stop them? And the city kinda just let it fall through the cracks or?
I can't really speak to it because this is prior to my time here. Um, there, I could find no history on what occurred as far as, um, the, whether it was discovered or not. I think it was just not discovered. Um, so as a result, it is a small encroachment. We're talking about a foot, foot and a half. Um, so it's really very difficult. Um, but again, surveyors are, again, supposed to catch these at, at as-built time. I'm not sure because I found nothing in the record that indicated there was any issue. Because generally, this would have been done at that time or some other corrective measure could have been taken.
Okay. Is the applicant, is the applicant here?
Applicant is here.
Sir, if you wanna step forward, you've already been sworn in. If you want to make a presentation to the commission, now is your opportunity.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Doug Rupel. I live at sixty-eighty Eightieth Street North, St. Petersburg, Florida. I am the Realtor of this deal with the seller. And he's, um, when we had this under contract and we were, it was just before, you know, shortly before closing is when this came up. And it was like the last thing on my mind since he's the third owner and it was built twelve years ago. Um, and when it came up, um, there, there, uh, he's, of course, he's beside himself. And, uh, he, he just couldn't understand how this could have happened. But no, no survey was ever done prior to him. And it was just never caught. Apparently, it fell through the cracks or something back when this originally was, um, put up, you know, uh, put forth. And the developer is out of business. So, um, hopefully, um, the, the new owner, um, it was a bank-owned at one time and, uh, because they'd gone out of business or, uh, bankrupt. And, uh, but again, he's, he's the third owner and we've got a fourth, fourth owner now that's ready to, you know, move in. So. I've seen, uh, the, the, um, as far as the, the drainage issue, it is very minor, it appears, uh, a foot or whatever it is. Um, and I, I don't, I can't see that there would be any drainage issue involved. And I contacted, I contacted Duke Energy, City of Clearwater Gas System, W O W Internet, Frontier Internet, somebody else. Um, actually, there are six total and the city of, uh, Tarpon Springs. And they all, uh, agreed to it, at least on the, on the, uh, uh, letters that I presented to, um, to Heather.
Any questions of, uh, this witness? Thank you, sir. Anyone else that wanna speak on this, uh, particular agenda item? Okay, we'd close the public portion. Now the ordinance is here for your consideration.
Are there any other commission comment? The chair will detain the motion.
Motion to approve ordinance number twenty nineteen dash seventeen.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Merrill Hoozus?
Yes, thank you. Item number twenty-four is a resolution two thousand nineteen dash seventeen, the application nineteen forty, conditional use tourist home. And this is a quasi-traditional. The city attorney will read the, uh, the title and will explain the quasi-traditional process.
This is resolution two thousand nineteen dash seventeen, a resolution of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, approving application number nineteen dash forty, requesting a conditional use permit to allow the operation of a seasonal short-term residential rental at eighteen West Orange Street, located on the north side of Orange Street between North Pinellas Avenue and Grand Boulevard and the T five D District, uh, of the special area plan, providing for findings, providing for conditions, and providing for an effective date. That was reading of resolution two thousand nineteen dash seventeen by title only. And the quasi-judicial, um, perc- perc- hearing procedures that I read earlier will apply. So now would be the opportunity for the city to make a presentation.
Okay. Um, again, this application is, uh, for conditional use. In this particular transect within the special area plan, in order to do a seasonal, um, vacation rental, they have to come in and ask for this conditional use approval so that you can deem, um, the project compatible or not compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. Um, staff feels that this is compatible. Um, again, they, it, these seasonal short-term rentals tend to function very similar to a single-family home. Um, it's just that they are rented on a more, um, per often basis than a normal single-family home is under our code. So there really isn't any concern here, um, that the intention, again, of your special area plan is to allow for a mixture of uses. Um, so this fits that criteria. Um, again, the project, the, the house is existing, um, on the property. It, there's sufficient, um, parking and access, uh, for the property. It meets the criteria, um, and conditions of the downtown character district that it's located in. Um, it's consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the comp plan. Um, there should be no, um, adverse impacts, uh, to the environment or historic resources since the home is existing. Um, and the conditional use should not affect, uh, joining property owner because it, property owners, because it should function and appear as a single-family residential use. Um, again, there, there, we have ability to serve it because we're currently serving it. Um, there's no expansion of utilities just because it's a single, because it's a seasonal rental. Um, with that, uh, staff recommends approval of resolution two thousand nine seventeen with the following, uh, conditions. The property shall remain a single-family residence rented as a single, um, living unit. The building shall be maintained with the following: one smoke detector in each sleeping area, one smoke detector in the common hall between sleeping areas. Uh, smoke detectors shall be of, um, a ten-year lithium ion, uh, ion battery style. And, uh, fireworks extinguisher shall be provided and, uh, shall have annual inspections. And then again, the applicant shall obtain and maintain a City of Tarpon, uh, Tarpon Springs business tax license for the use. If the business tax receipt lapses for a period of more than six months, a new review for the conditional use will be required. And that's subject to the conditions of your, of, of a conditional use in your, um, land development code. Uh, with that, uh, the planning board did see here this application and they did, um, recommend approval unanimously. And I can answer any questions that you might have on this.
Uh, yes, so I see this, uh, you know, as residential, uh, rented as a single living. Is that for family use or single use?
It's a single-family residential unit, so it could be used by a single person. It could be used by a couple. It could use, be used by a family.
But this whole house could be used by one person?
Correct. It's meant to, it's meant to be used as a single-family unit.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yeah, I was just curious. How many of these conditional use types for the seasonal short-term rentals do we currently allow?
Um, we currently have at least, since I've been here in the four years that I've been here, we have approved at least three. Especially in the special area plan. Now, they're in different locations throughout the city, but you probably have more that have, that are out there.
And then other than code enforcement, is there any way to regulate how long people are staying at this house? Just so that it's almost kinda not like a conditional use to be like an Airbnb type? Or is it just the trust that it's gonna be a seasonal rental?
It's based on the definition in the, uh, S A P, which basically defines them for short-term use. It doesn't really define a, a, a period of time.
So there's no time period in terms of five weeks, whatever?
No. That's in the general code. This is, the special area plan's a little different.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Carter, do you have questions?
Yes, I do. Uh, Heather, across Pinellas Avenue, this would be permitted. Am I right in saying that? Like, uh, you don't have to necessarily come?
Yeah, in some of the transects, you allow for, uh, you, as a use by right. And other transects, you wanna, you wanna control for, or you've asked in the past as a board to control for the compatibility question. So this just happens to be a transect where it requires a conditional use. But yeah, you are correct. In some of the other districts, it is allowed by right.
Okay, so, um, this house is like two properties off Pinellas Avenue. Am I correct in saying that?
Mm-hmm.
Good observation. Um, and my understanding is this, this is actually an application so they can do Airbnb and V B R O. Am I correct in saying that?
More than likely. You have to ask the applicant how they're marketing it. I don't know the answer to that, but I would, I would assume so.
Okay, thanks for clarifying.
Mayor, do you have any questions?
The, uh, question that I have is, is in benefit of the public. What areas do we have available for something like that?
Well, the majority of the special area plan, depending upon where people would like to, to put one of these, they would need to come in and talk to myself or my staff and go over the low property locations because you have a variety of transects that it's allowed in and you have some transects that it's not allowed in. And you have some zoning districts that it's allowed and some zoning districts that it's not allowed in. So, um, it's something that you, it's really unique to, um, the, the particular properties. So they really need to come in and talk to us.
Thank you. Uh, I believe that, um, we need places like that to, uh, attract more visitors to Tarpon Springs. And I'm glad that we're able to provide this service. To listen someplace.
Is the applicant here today? Mr. Fruits, Roger Fruits. Does anybody from the public wanna speak on this particular item? Ms. Protos? Yeah, I need to swear you in when you come back down here. If you could raise your right hand and be sworn under oath, you swear the testimony you're about to give is gonna be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
As far as I can remember.
Okay, and if you could state your name and your address?
I need-
Anita Protos, 901 Bay Shore.
Thank you.
Drive. Either in the 80s or the 90s, we used to have tourist homes, especially out in Sunset Hills around the school. We had a lot of trouble with foreign families coming, walking around the pools with no clothes on, parents complaining their children are watching these people, parties all night, and problems. At that time, we did pass, if I'm not mistaken, an ordinance about tourist homes, and renting out homes for people for a certain amount of time. Then we had an agency in New York, and one in California, that was renting homes here to send their tourists here, who would go to the travel agency to come to Florida. They'd come to Tarpon. And, and a couple of times, the police had to go to some of these homes, there were problems. I'm asking the commission to look at what we have with the zoning, and secure these homes around neighborhoods. This house is the old Jukes' home, not the one on Tarpon Avenue, where they lived before, right down the street from where I grew up. These are beautiful homes, and they're big homes that you can rent out, but it's a neighborhood. And that's what we've got to be very careful of, is the neighborhood. And it is in an old section of Tarpon, where there are some historic homes. I don't know if this one came under the historic designation or not. But I think it's something we have to look at, to protect residents of Tarpon and the neighborhoods with people coming in. And yes, we do want them here, but I think we have about 300 houses in Tarpon Springs that are being rented out. And we've also talked about, when Don Scholl came up with his house, wanting to rent out on the bayou. And this is where we're going to fall through the cracks and have some trouble. It's coming. So as commissioners and mayor and the city manager of Tarpon Springs, with our city attorney, we need to look at our zoning, what we want, and how we're going to do it, and regulate it, because St. Pete, Clearwater, Dunedin, they've all had problems with this. I don't know these people, I don't know what they're going to do, who they're going to bring in, but we have to be very cautious about our community, and what comes into our residential sections.
Thank you. Any, anyone else from the public want to speak? There being none, that's just been brought back to you, then, Mayor, the resolution and staff recommendation with conditions.
Are there any, any other commission comments? Chair will detain the motion. For resolution 2019-17.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Okay, I just want to make sure that the motion includes staff recommendation, which include the conditions, or was it just the resolution itself?
Absolutely includes a staff recommendation, and significantly want to, or especially want to highlight the business tax. That's an important aspect, if we're going to put this in a conditional use, want to make sure that they're registering with the city, and paying their due taxes.
But it's going to include all those conditions, and?
One through three.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, second.
Rule call.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Merrill Huzus?
Yes. Next is item number 25, resolution 2019-18, the application 19-36, is conditional use single-family for 412 West Orange. And this is also quasi-traditional, the city attorney will read the title.
This is resolution 2019-18, a resolution of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, approving application number 19-36, requesting a conditional use permit to allow construction of a second single-family resident, residents at 410 East Tarpon Avenue, Lot 9, and west half of Lot 8, Block 1, Fernald's LS subdivision, located on the south side of Tarpon Avenue, between South Gross Avenue and South Levis Avenue, in the T4A District of the Special Area Plan, providing for findings, providing for conditions, and providing an effective date. That was reading of resolution 2019-18 by title only. And as you said, it is a quasi-hearing. Heather, you've already been sworn in, you can make your presentation. Anyone else is here on this, this evening to speak on this issue? Okay, you've already been sworn under oath, it'll be considered to be continued. Anyone else? Okay. Heather, did you want to make your presentation?
Sure. This application is for Mark Wood. This is actually a historic property. The other one was not, this is a historic property, but it's also in the Special Area Plan, it has the same requirements in this transect for them to come forward for a conditional use. This one's a little bit different, because it's a secondary unit going on the property, versus a, just a single-family, existing single-family home being converted. So there's an existing single-family home on the property, and then there's going to be a small cottage that's going to be built, that, again, your Special Area Plan, that's the intention of it. The intention of that Special Area Plan is to provide for additional housing options and choices, along with different uses, in a mixing of, mixing of uses in the neighborhood. So with that, there was one issue when this actually was previously done, the resolution was mis, was mislabeled as 2018-18, it's actually 2019-18, it was just a scrivener's error for the staff, but I want to bring that to your attention. With that, again, the, this particular property, it's actually been through HBB already, he wanted to make sure that the cottage that he was proposing could, would make it through the, that staff approval, or that, sorry, that board approval, before, he brought it before you, for actual action on the, on the additional unit. So he's actually secured his HBB approval at this point. There's probably more backup than we normally get because of the HBB approval in here, so you can see the elevations of the proposed residence of what he's actually proposing. There's a site plan in here that shows where it's going to be. There's existing on the property sufficient area for parking, so we're not concerned about any additional parking that he would need. Again, these are meant to function like residential homes. So he's meant to have the minimum, he has to meet the minimum requirement of the parking in this particular case, I know that we talked about this Commissioner Carr. It's one, it's 1.5, so he needs three for the, for total for the two units. So he's got that, between his garage and the areas that he's showing for parking. So we're, we're not worried about parking, he's meeting all of the other criteria required in the Special Area Plan. A matter of fact, the access is taken in the back of the property, which is encouraging, we're actually getting the intention of the Special Area Plan to start being realized. So this is, this is something that staff is very encouraged to see occurring in the area, and we're recommending approval of this particular application. And I believe there's some conditions on this, too. Let me get to that page, so I can read those into the record. Okay. So again, the conditional use will expire within one year of approval if a building permit is not issued, and the applicant shall work with the city staff to determine the appropriate improvements to alley, not necessarily paving, but something to make the surface more permanent and stable. Again, this alleyway is not, it's got some issues to it, so we need to make sure with Public Works that there was a plan at one time to pave portions of it, and I'm not sure if it went down this far. So we're looking into that with Public Works, and we handle that at the time of building permit. If they need to improve the roadway, then we include that in their building permit application. With that, I can answer any questions.
Any questions from the commission?
Just have one, for, do we need to, for number two, do we need to be a little more specific? I feel like this is pretty vague, about the applicant shall work with the city staff to determine, determine appropriate improvement to the alley, not necessarily paving, but something to make surface more permanent and stable. Is that an area that we need to ask the applicant to? I mean, we're just asking them to work with the city, so that could mean anything, we're putting rock down, gravel down, paving, concrete?
Generally, I've deferred in the past with these to the Public Works Department on what they've wanted to do, and we requested paving on one, and we get very specific on the condition, they need to come back to you. If Public Works doesn't want to support paving, I would hate to have them come back, just because the condition, he's already spent a lot of time in HBB. So, I mean, we can get that specific if you would like, but that's really the concern that I have, is Public Works hasn't really given us an answer, because they don't have formal building plans to start construction, so that's really when they activate. We just send them out usually to take a look.
Okay, so we could put something in, in the lines of work with city staff slash Public Works Department, to determine the best surface for the alleyway for improvement?
Public Works Department is part of your city staff, I think it's all inclusive.
Okay, it's encompassing, then?
Yeah, it's all inclusive.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Any other questions from the commissioner? No, seeing none. Is the applicant here tonight? Would you like to step forward, make your presentation if you want to? You could raise your right hand, when you get there, I need to swear you under oath. Swear the testimony you're about to give is going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. If you could state your name and your address, please?
Sure, my name is Stephanie Wood, and I live at 412 East Tarpon Ave, Tarpon Springs. My husband can't be here tonight, Mark, my brother-in-law, Fred is here for us. So this, we dubbed it the Rose Cottage, we're building it for my mother-in-law to live, she's getting older, she lives in Sarasota, and she's planning on coming up. So it has no intention to ever, if that doesn't even happen, to ever be used for Airbnb or anybody other than family, ever. So we just want to let you know. And as far as the road behind it, it's not paved, and we kind of really hope they don't pave it, because it's that alley, so we don't want to incur a lot of traffic going behind there. Right now, when it gets used, and, you know, a lot of potholes back there, we go out in our section and kind of even it up, and put the dirt back in, as it, as it washes away with all the rain and everything. But we really hope we get approved for this, and I know my mother-in-law would really love it.
Does the commission have any questions of the applicant? Seeing none, thank you. I saw a hand, another hand needed, did you have comments on this one?
Well, she asked a question.
Okay, up here at the mic, if you can, please. You've already been sworn under oath, you're, continue to be under oath. Could you state your name, please, and your address?
Anita Protos, 901 Bay Shore, you're all going to know it by heart pretty soon. I came because it's, it's a historic donation of a house. It's the old Jukes' house with the dog trot in the middle. And the alley was put in years ago for Vincent Funeral Home. And during Charlie Barnes' time, before I was ever in office, it was paved, and then they started putting gravel in, when it started breaking down. So years ago, it did have pavement, not like what we have now, but they did top coat it, I guess you call it. And it's, I drove back there today to see, it is in very bad shape, someone's oil pan or something's going to be taken off with the ruts in the road. But at that time, Charlie Barnes was on a program to pave all alleys in Tarpon Springs, and there are a lot of paved alleyways, or used to be, there's still some now. But that's what used to be there, and I want to thank you for taking care of the home, and preserving the home, because these homes are very important. And I hope even the one on, the previous one, I hope that one also went through the Historic Preservation Board. All these older homes that have been marked as historic homes need to be kept that way. And in the back, you have the piece that was on the house, so people will know that it is a historic home. And I just hope that y'all make sure, when all these homes change, for people to rent to live in, and are being altered in any way, which they're not altering the home, that everything, even on the property, does have to go through the historic preservation. Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak on this issue? Seeing none, it's back to you, Mayor, with staff recommendation of approval with conditions.
Thank you. Are there any commission comments? I need a motion?
Excuse me?
You've got Commissioner Seber's comment.
Oh, you have a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, Rose Cottage sounds amazing, and you've already gone through Historical Preservation Board, and done all your due diligence, and I'm in approval of this. And I can make a motion, if you like, to approve resolution 2019-18.
With staff recommendations and conditions?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay.
We have a first and a second, rule call, please.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Merrill Huzus?
Yes. Next is item number 26, resolution 2019-18, the application 18-159, conditional use, storage stressed property, 1730 South Pinellas Avenue, this is quasi-traditional, and the city attorney will read the resolution.
Thank you. This is resolution 2019-19, a resolution of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, approving application 18-159, requesting conditional use approval to expand an existing mini warehouse use by converting 16,335 square feet of existing commercial retail space in two existing buildings to mini storage use, resulting in a total of 51,085 square feet of mini storage use located at 1730 South Pinellas Avenue, in the Highway Business HB zoning district, providing for findings, providing for conditions, and providing for an effective date. That was reading of resolution 2019-19 by title only, is quasi-judicial. Is there anyone here that's going to speak on this particular agenda item? Okay, if you could stand up, raise your right hand, or be sworn under oath, I'm going to swear everybody out at the same time, then. You swear the testimony you're going to give is going to be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, thank you. So city staff would begin with the presentation.
Vice Mayor Terrapini is not here today, he's absent due to the illness, but he's sending an email regarding this, item number 26, and I will ask the city clerk to read it for the record.
For item number 26, I concur with staff and the Planning and Zoning Board that this application should be denied, as mini storage fronting on Alt 19 is not compatible with the balance of the properties and uses fronting on the Alt 19 quarter. The existing retail commercial office is much more compatible with surrounding business and uses.
Okay, so Heather, would you like to make a presentation?
Oh, me, sure. Heather Earl, we're Planning and Zoning Director and staff to this application. Okay, so this application is actually an expansion of an existing mini storage facility that's actually behind this building. This building is actually a plaza that fronts right on Alt 19. And the request here has been just to basically close in the storefronts and provide storage, but still preserve the frontage, so it appears to still be a functional plaza. Staff's biggest concern is, we spent a lot of time sending staff and people from this commission, I believe Jacob came several times with us, down for the corridor study that was done over the course of the last several years. Part of that study was looking at what we want to see for land uses along Alt 19, and how those land uses will interact with the roadway. One of the big things that came out of that is, the residents that were there from our area were really interested in having the ability to walk to the small businesses, and provide for that walkable community. So that's something that we want to continue to provide for. Staff's not convinced that this is compatible, this expansion of this public storage, putting that kind of in the middle and mix of that corridor, on the, you know, the southern fringe of the, of the community. We're really trying to figure out, you know, and see the businesses. I know there's a business coming in right across the street, that's actually some young gentleman moving in from Clearwater, that'll be coming forward to ask for an annexation of their building. They're looking to build a structure that's going to be, you know, up on the street, and that needs the criteria for their district. Highway Business District does allow for storage only by conditional use. And so you just recently approved one up on Alt 19, the large knitneel storage, they came back for a modification not too long ago, to modify the building. And we're, and staff feels that that's the more appropriate location. It's, it's easy access from the highway, we're not really interested, and we really don't feel it's compatible for this particular area of the community. We also have some concerns with the aesthetics, the colors, and things that they're choosing for the actual structure itself. That's not something that we really want to have, these bright hues and that type of thing, with nothing there, because you're only going to be going into storage units, you're not going to be going into a plaza, you know, like you do just to the south of this, which is where he has Little Thai Cafe, and there's a yoga studio, and there's a lot of those smaller businesses here. We want to provide for that small business community along Alt 19, to support those businesses and those uses north in downtown. So that's staff's concern. This was presented to the Planning Board in June on the 17th, and Planning Board went with staff's recommendation, which was denial of the application. And I can answer any questions that you might have on this particular application.
Commission questions? Seeing none, okay. There being no questions, does the applicant want to make a presentation? Okay. Sir, if you could state your name and your business address when you get there? You are under oath.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Matt Fehmel with Kelly Horn and Associates, located at 655 North Franklin Street in Tampa, Florida. And we are here tonight to present our conditional use application to convert- to convert 16,355 square feet of commercial retail to mini warehouse. I'd like to stress, we're only requesting approval of our use, which is allowed in our zoning with your approval. Public Storage owns a 2.74 acre property located at 1730 South Pinellas Avenue. The rear of the property is currently operating as a mini warehouse, with the front of the property serving as strip retail. Public Storage is currently operating under a conditional use permit that was previously approved to allow the mini warehouse in the rear of the property. At the Planning Commission meeting, there was a two-part question after closing of public comments that may have led to misinterpretation of our plan. The question was yes or no, the use is not in the best interest of, or is compliant with code, with the answer from staff being correct. We want to clarify that we have been working with staff since April of 2018 to come up with a plan that meets current code requirements. As you can see, per city staff report, the project meets all technical and site requirements of the Land Development Code. We worked with staff on the following improvements that will enhance the property, enhance the corridor. We're providing enhanced storefront appearance aimed to comply with the City of Tarpin Springs' objective for the area. This would include locking the doors and blocking out the windows to give a retail appearance while allowing for the operation of self-storage. We're providing enhanced landscaping on the front buffer. We're installation of two landscape islands to solve trees to break up Rosa Park and meet code of no more than 10 parking stalls. We're installing a new internal ADA connectivity to public right-of-way, including the existing bus stop out front. We're restriping the parking lot to relocate some of the ADA stalls to friendlier location. We're adding a dumpster enclosure to screen the current dumpster. And we're removing the existing sidewalk that's located along Pinellas Avenue and installing a new sidewalk that meets ADA. The existing sidewalk's in pretty poor condition. The next slide shows existing buffer and storefront from Pinellas Avenue. We're proposing to add perimeter shrubs, trees, sod, and to upgrade the irrigation system to provide an enhanced view that meets the goals of the corridor. Here's some pictures of some slides that's showing what the proposed improvements will look like once we get, if we get approved with our conditional use permit. These next slides show what the enhanced storefront will look like, and it's going to mimic the elevations of a retail storefront. With approval of the conditional use permit, my client will be able to fill the empty space with market-driven demand that will benefit the community. The storage space is currently 95% occupied with the retail space at 65% capacity. We've heard from staff they're opposed to the conditional use application because we are taking potential retail space out of the corridor. We have verified there is over 278,000 square feet of vacant retail space along the Pinellas Avenue corridor. The attached map shows the vacant retail businesses along the corridor. We've, it's kind of hard to read, but we've identified where there's vacant businesses and then their occupancy rates. We're proposing to remove 16,000 square foot of retail space out of a market that has available capacity, allowing those potential retailers to be served in locations by landlords that focus on retail. Public Storage is in the storage business and not the retail business. The conditional use approval will allow Public Storage to expand and operate a business that is needed in the community and allow the other retail owners to operate types of businesses which are their experts. And we just went through a site and provided some flyers of available businesses that are, could serve the retail demands of the community. With that, I'd like to hand my presentation over to Rick, who works with Public Storage. Thank you.
My name's Rick McKeever. I live at 650 Island Way, Clearwater. I have been with Public Storage for 30 years, and I have lived in Clearwater for all my life. I've spent a lot of time in Tarpin Springs, and I frequent the downtown area quite often. So I drive the Pinellas County, the Pinellas Corridor quite often. So I'm going to break it down. It's pretty simple. This property is going to look just like it looks now. If you don't like the colors, we'll change them. We'll leave them the way they are. We're going to increase the enhancement of the landscaping. We're going to make it look much more better than it is and than what it has to be per code. As he mentioned, there is, right now advertised, over 287,000 square feet of space, of rentable space, commercial space on your Pinellas Avenue. The 16,000 may seem like a drop in the bucket, but I've had several commercial guys, because I called all, everybody that had commercial space are saying, yeah, we're having trouble keeping and maintaining good tenants in our commercial spaces. You guys have had some great growth down there. You've had a new Windex Plaza put in, but the Manatee Plaza is suffering terribly, 100,000 square feet of vacant space. In your corridor plan, there is more commercial space to come. So I'm trying to help the community. I'm in the storage business. I'd like to maintain the storage. It's 95% occupancy there, 65% occupancy in our commercial side. So I think that the corridor will be enhanced because of this change. Not, it won't detract from it. And that's about as basic as I can make it. And I thank you for your time.
Okay, sir, before you sit down, are there any questions from the commission? No?
How long has Public Storage owned this property?
I believe, well, I've been here 30 years, and they've owned it since then.
Okay, so they've let it get to the state that it is currently with the parking lot, and the discussion is all the upgrades, et cetera, right?
The state that it's in meets current code. I mean, it can stay this way, with the exception of some trees and some foliage in the front, but we don't have to do the sidewalk unless we repair the building. We don't have to do any of the other enhancements unless we go to a full-blown repair. And I fully believe that if you look at the nursing home across the street, it's beautiful. They've done a very nice job with landscaping, and they don't have commercial real estate. They're just, it's just, it's a good use, but it's, I'm trying to make the property better than it is, than it's ever been and than it will ever be.
I don't have any further questions.
Any other questions from the commissioners?
No.
Is there anyone else from the, thank you, sir. Anyone else from the public wanted to talk on this agenda item? Okay, Heather, did you want to make any further summary comments? Okay.
No, I'm just available for any questions if you have them.
Okay, so my respect to you.
Thank you.
And the commission.
Thanks to the commission. I have a comment to make. I think storage uses are very desirable on US 19. On alternate 19, we're encouraging to have small businesses. Small businesses is the backbone of our local economy, and this is what I will support. Mini storage, to me, is not desirable on the urban core, and I cannot support this application. Any comments?
Ready to make a motion?
Yeah, I believe that this is a property owner trying to make a positive difference on their property. And I think just because it might not fit our vision for the area doesn't mean that there's not room to adapt that. Personally, I think it's just a compelling argument to consider how much retail space is available along alternate 19. I mean, I think they mentioned the Manatee Plaza is largely empty. So I think this is a business that's been around here for a long time, trying to make their property better.
Thank you. Ready for motion?
Motion to.
Yeah, they also mentioned that we could work with them as far as coloring and painting and those other things that we may want to work with them on. I feel that there is a lot of retail space that's open in this town, and it's not getting filled, and it's staying vacant. So this would be an upgrade to Alt 19, I think, and bring in more tax space. So I would approve for this to go through.
Let me see, Carr, you say you want to make a motion?
Yeah, just for some discussion also, it's currently being proposed to blackout the windows. It's going to give a premise that it looks like the buildings are shut down when you have blackout windows. I would have some concerns as a commissioner, when you're coming into the gateway of Tarpin Springs from the south, that's what you're looking at as a whole. I don't think this necessarily fits the area of Tarpin Springs. There's already a mini storage back there at 95%. Yes, it's not occupied on the retail side, but it's a pretty rough-looking plaza if you haven't driven by it and seen it. The applicant also discussed that they've owned it for quite some time, if I recall. So there are some concerns about upkeep and maintenance, too. And we have to remember, this is a large public corporation who's within our Tarpin Springs District. So if they haven't upkept their property currently today, how do you expect them to upkeep the property for further years down the road? But coming back to the premise of it, I still don't think, as a commissioner, that it fits the area. Although there's enough public storage behind there, the mixed use is also a nice thing to have along this corridor as well. You've got multiple apartments coming in. You're probably going to see Manatee Plaza, that was referenced multiple times, redeveloped into a mixed-use residential at some point as well. So that's a significant amount of that square footage that was brought up. So I do want to bring up that's 100-plus thousand square feet that would be taking off probably the retail rolls in this area and create more of a desire for this area from a retail standpoint. Not in real estate, but this is just perspective from living here my whole life in the corridor of Alt 19. So I do have some concerns on this. So I would make the motion to deny the Resolution 2019-19 tonight.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Would it make a difference if they didn't have blackout windows?
No, it wouldn't to me.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's an empty plaza, what it turns out to be.
Okay, we have a motion to have a second? A second? Motion denied? Need another motion?
Motion to approve the thought.
Second.
It'd be a motion to approve Resolution 2019-19 pursuant to, actually, there were no staff recommendations other than denial. So it'd be to approve the resolution. That's your motion?
Right.
Okay, so we have first, second. Rock call, please.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
No.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Malo Huzis?
No.
Okay, the motion fails.
Thank you. Next is item number 27, Resolution 2019-20, Application 1970, Temporary One-Way County Club Court Removal on Street Parking on County Club Court in South Side of St. Andrews Drive. This is by the hospital, the backside of the hospital.
So I'll read. Thank you, Mayor. Resolution 2019-20, Resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpin Springs, Florida, requesting one-way country club court, remove and on-street parking from country club court and on-street parking from south side of St. Andrews Drive for a period of not to exceed 18 months. And it will expire on January 1st, 2021, to facilitate the relocation of the ambulance bays to the south side of the hospital during renovation of the emergency room and providing for an effective date. That was reading of Resolution 2019-20 by Title only.
So the resolution pretty much says it all. What we're looking to do here is the hospital is now finally moving forward with the renovation projects at the emergency room. In order for that to happen, we've got to relocate the ambulance bays from where they currently are to the south side of the hospital. We met with Sunstar and the other ambulance providers, our fire folks, our police folks, and the hospital representatives to come up with a plan that would work and still make it safe for combined traffic because we're going to have traffic that's not only going to have ambulances on it, but also this facility, this roadway currently has, you know, regular vehicle traffic on it. So we have come up with this one-way plan of country club court for a short temporary time of the 18 months that they expect to be in construction. And that is essentially what you see here. Part of that is relocating the on-street parking and prohibiting it for that time period to make it safer. So the travel would be from Pinellas Ave., basically east into the existing parking lots. Then you would go proceed south through the parking lots onto St. Andrews. That would stay two-way. But it's been a little, I guess, restricted and congested down on St. Andrews Way because there's been parking on both sides of the street. I know that our partners at the hospital are going to work with their staff and kind of move their staff to the back parking lot behind the hospital, as many of the staff as they can, so that they can eliminate, you know, some of that parking without really affecting that. But we still want to provide signage to notice the public because this has been parking allowed on the roadways here for some time. So with that, that's what staff is really trying to accomplish here. This is a short-term, a short-term project. We're essentially asking for a few of the ground markers to be put on just to kind of direct traffic, but the majority of this will just be signage that can be removed because we don't want to, excuse me, permanently one-way, excuse me, one-way road. I make that a one-way road permanently, so. I think we've exceeded my capacity to speak tonight. With that, that's really what the staff is trying to accomplish here. I know that the hospital will be bringing forward additional plans over the next few months with what they plan on doing. I mean, you'll be seeing those in a future presentation. So this is just the preliminary step. I want to get their ambulance bay relocated and constructed before they actually start really working inside the hospital because they've got to redo corridors and all kinds of stuff to actually get to the emergency room from this location. So it's going to take them some preliminary work to get there before they can actually move the ER entrance. With that, I can answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. I really don't have any question. I just want to comment that these changes are necessary to be done in order to have construction begin for the new ER for the hospital. It's very necessary. But also, I am very glad and thankful to the dental office of Dr. Allen and Dr. Johnson for working with us and to accomplishing that. So thanks to both of them. Any commission comment?
I've got one, or a couple of questions for Heather. Just for clarification, we're directing traffic through the parking lot? It's not a road, right?
That's correct, but they're owned by, they're all city properties. So we've kind of worked with the attorney since this is a temporary situation. We're not really concerned about the, about them riding through the parking lots, except for the fact that I need some ground markers. So I've asked the hospital, this is the plan that they gave me because they didn't realize it needed to go to a public hearing.
Sure.
But there'll be an actual construction drawing, and when that construction drawing comes through, they're actually going to put ground markers in that we'll have to have milled off later because we need to have that directional flow here. The ambulances actually will come in, country club, and go behind the hospital to exit on the other exit. The only people that'll be coming onto St. Andrews are actually the regular vehicular traffic.
Okay. I do know there's a lot of parking that happens on St. Andrews. It's pretty tight to get there on a normal day. Obviously, there's a demand for parking in this area. Was there any discussions about putting a temporary parking lot at all in the old motel lot?
The hospital plans on utilizing that old hotel lot as preliminary staging to do the preliminary design here, and then they'll be having some parking there. But what I was told by the dental office was the majority of the parking there is hospital staff. So we've asked the CEO to look into that and possibly relocate people to the back parking lot. I realize it's an inconvenience to have to walk across the trail to come to work, but in this particular thing, I'd rather have emergency vehicles have access to the ER and inconvenience folks for 18 months and have a safe facility. So that's really, that's really what we've asked him to do, and he didn't seem to have any concern with that. Apparently, it's just something people don't want to use that back parking lot.
Yeah.
So, yeah, they will use the front, that front piece because they're not actually going to start their development for their future office for some time. That's kind of on the back burner.
Great. Thank you.
Any other commission comment? Are there any public comments on this item? No comments? The chair will detain the motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Rock call.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Malo Huzis?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Okay, next is item number 28, Reconsideration of South Spring Boulevard Sidewalk Vote. Commissioner Seber. Vice Mayor Tara Paney sent us an email, and he's asking us to read it for the record. City clerk, if you please do that.
Item number 28, "My original position has not changed, and I would encourage the commission to move forward, not backwards, with installing the sidewalk as directed to staff and legally rectified in a formal vote. The record will reflect a commissioner posted the question to our city attorney if the item needed to be re-advertised or if we can vote on the motion and second, which we were advised we could legally vote, and we did."
Thank you. Commissioner Seber, you place order the agenda. You want to talk about?
Yes, thanks. Does anyone need an explanation on reconsideration of a vote? Yes, thanks. Uh, does anyone need an explanation on, uh, reconsideration of a vote? Everyone, I just wanted to ask that question.
Well, now, but I will ask the, uh, city attorney to-
I'd be happy to do it. So, um, under Roberts' Rules of Order, which i- i- the rules that, that govern what you do here at the city, Roberts' Rules specifically provide, and motions for reconsideration are motions that have to be made at the same meeting where the motion took place that you want to reconsider, or at the next subsequent meeting, which would be this meeting. The motion for reconsideration would have to be made by one of the people who voted, uh, in the positive matter, in other words, on the winning side of the motion. It's my understanding that Commissioner Seber was the only dissenting vote, and therefore she does not have the ability to make a motion for reconsideration. She has placed it on the agenda to, um, to talk to you about the possibility of one of the other four of you making a motion to reconsider. There would have to be a second, um, and then there would have to be a vote on that particular motion. If the motion is not made, or the motion fails, um, then the action that took place at the last meeting stands. If the motion is made and seconded and passes, then the prior motion at the last meeting relative to the sidewalk issue would be put back on the table, which would mean that you can either consider it tonight, um, or you can consider it at some future meeting. That would be your, your option.
So, what we need to do is ask for motions first, if we're going to continue or not?
Um, whether you want to allow the commissioner to make a presentation before you, uh, call for a motion, that is, you're up to you, Mayor.
Well, since, uh, it was placed on the agenda by Commissioner Seber, I think it's a good idea.
Thank you. Uh, I, I do have some comments and would like to also, um, ask for public comments when I'm, when I'm done before we make any motion.
I think we ought to get a motion first before we continue after you've been.
There are a lot of people who waited a long time to be here for public comments, so I think that they deserve the respect to be able to speak, um, before we, we make a decision.
Do you want to explain what you, uh?
Yes. Um, I have several reasons for bringing this, uh, vote back on the one-way, uh, South Spring traffic study, uh, for reconsideration. First of all, that's exactly what was on the agenda. It was the, um, the vote to ask Bob if we wanted to, uh, continue the one-way s- study, um, on South Spring. Uh, and that was on the agenda, not the sidewalks. Secondly, I think a motion to add approval to connect sidewalks on the east side of the street was completely the wrong thing to do. I think that was bad government and lacked, uh, complete transparency. There was no notification to the residents that may be affected, or was connecting the sidewalks included in the agenda. Actually, the decision to not connect the sidewalks on the east side was made by the previous board last January. At our last meeting, any residents who were in the audience regarding the one-way vote were completely confused by the motion made. To me, it felt like we snuck in another vote and did not allow residents who might have been affected to be heard. I'm sure all of our residents would like notification on decisions made by our board when it affects them and would like the opportunity to speak. The reconsideration on this vote is about doing the right thing for our residents and about transparency. This board has spoken about transparency, but did the opposite with that vote. My third reason for reconsideration of this vote is that we would be spending ninety to a hundred thousand dollars to connect the small section of sidewalks on the, on the east side. When will we have another hundred thousand to do the survey on the west side and to submit our findings to the Army Corps? In fact, we flood all around Wakan Bay during high tides and heavy rain. When are we going to address these concerns, which I feel have become quite urgent and are possibly affecting our property values? In closing, I would ask that one of you make the motion to reconsider your last vote. If the reconsideration passes, I would suggest tabling this item to the next meeting.
And, Mr. Trask, um, would you please explain to us if the process that was used the last time legally did?
So, uh, the, the question came up at that meeting with my associate, Rob Escherfelder, as to whether or not it was legal or proper to have the motion that was made. And the answer was, is it was not illegal and not improper for that motion to be made at that time. You were conducting city business. There was no need for notice. There was no need to have it on the agenda. You would only require it to be noticed and on the agenda, uh, for, um, good government, uh, transparency or quasi-actual hearings or other public hearings. But there is no legal requirement, um, for it to be on the agenda, and there was no impropriety by having the motion made. It was legal and proper at the time.
And, and my concern, as I said earlier, is transparency and good government. We did not give the public opportunity to, to be here that had anything to do with the sidewalks. And even though it was legal, I just, you know, have to differ that we were not transparent and we did not allow the public to be here uh, when usually it's advertised what's on the agenda and public can come, uh, and speak on, on what they see on the agenda. So, as, as far as, as I'm concerned, it was legal, yes, but, um, not transparent. And, um, I, I just feel for all these people that were not able to be here because they, and the ones that were, were totally confused about what we were voting on because we were here to vote on the, the one-way. Uh, also, using the funding for the west side and doing a survey, I think, is, uh, something that we need to do. Um, but I do have a letter. I'd like to maybe, uh, Irene, if you'd like to read from Mr. Malone, uh, for public record, and then would like to hear from the public.
Mayor, I've got a question for the city manager. That's-
Go ahead.
Uh, does this need to come back before the board for, um, approval for funding of this project?
Which one, the side?
The sidewalk and the, um, and the west side, um, a design.
After we do the design, we, we probably have to bring it back for final, for approval.
Okay. Thanks.
It would be unfair having all the residents here that are wanting to speak. Uh, because if we ask for motion, and if it dies, it's over with. So I would like to, uh, take it to the, I'd like to ask for public comments if anybody's interested to express their opinion. I'm asking for public comment.
I would also like to have read in the record the letter that we got from Mr. Malone. You know, at, at some point.
Good evening. Susan Kikta, two fourteen Earl Street, Tarpon Springs. Well, this item was on the agenda and voted on, the item about the sidewalks, in January. It was voted on previously, and it was settled at that time. And it was properly noticed. We did have people come, um, voice their concerns at that time, and the, the commission listened to them. A- and I, and as Commissioner Seber had stated, staff at that time was directed to do a study, um, regarding across the street, what we can do for pedestrians across the street. So I was kind of confused and upset when I saw at our last meeting, there was another, um, item that was discussed, and then all of a sudden, something came out about the sidewalks, and it was, uh, it was voted on again without even being noticed. And, you know, again, all of you up here talk about transparency. Well, this was not transparent to our residents. And I think this was a very underhanded move by the commission. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jean Lindsay. I live at three oh five South Spring Boulevard. It's kind of feeling like Groundhog Day here now. This is my third time here speaking on this same subject. First, I wanted to address, which I didn't know this until Mr. Trask talked about it, that if something is brought up at one meeting and then we want to rediscuss it, it needs to be brought up as a motion to reconsider within the next meeting. We voted on this, or you voted on this, in January. It was finalized, as far as I understood, in January. Nobody made a motion to bring it back up at the next meeting. So how are we able to go six months and then bring it up again without any notice to the public and change the vote? Is there any explanation on that, Mr. Trask, that you can give me that we could do that, that that's allowed?
This is not a question-and-answer period, so you need to make your statements, and then the commission will decide.
All right.
Sorry.
Um, there's, I, I do agree that there was no transparency. There was no, I felt like we were coming to vote on one thing or to be heard. When I got up here and to speak last time, it was on the one-way street. I did not even speak on the sidewalk because I didn't even know that until after the public comments were made. Once the public comments were made, it was cut off for public comments, and then you change what the vote was going to be about. There was no other items today. There were a lot of votes. I never saw that happen today. I'm just a resident. I'm not an attorney. I'm not a commissioner. I'm not a politician. But it just seemed very underhanded. I also received today, Irene sent me some information. I asked for all the information that we had on public record that has gone out in the past. There were two different letters that I saw that said that they were sent to residents on our street. One of them was, um, dated in September, that they were going to have surveyors out and actually get with residents and, um, view how it was going to affect our trees, driveways, mailboxes, and existing surfaces. And then they also sent another one in December twenty-first, and I, as a resident there, I'm very passionate about this. I would notice if those ra- le- letters came to my house. I never received either one of those, nor did I ever see a surveyor come to my house. Um, never saw any survey flags, anything. So I'm not sure where the transparency is. I feel like we're being underhanded here in a lot of different ways. I do thi- agree that the money ought to be spent. When everybody agreed, even at the last meeting, that we need to look at putting the sidewalks on the west side. I agree that we should be spending that money there. They agreed in January to spend the money to, or at least look into doing the sidewalks on the west side. I don't see anything that's been done since that time to evaluate that. So, I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. Is this still Tuesday? Yeah. I guess it is. My name is Lou Esposito, and, uh, I have a hole about South Spring Boulevard. Getting back with, Mr. Lindsay said, you know, we came to a meeting, it was voted on, it was voted down, and then all of a sudden, another meeting came up, and it was a one-way street. Uh, I don't know what happened there. I think Mr. Carr wanted to go home, change things around a little bit, and all of a sudden, we're voting on the sidewalks. I, I don't know how that happened. Tonight, sitting here as long as we are, all I've heard was, "How are we going to make Tarpon Springs beautiful?" So many different ways people brought up, you folks brought up. We live in an area right there where it's hundreds of years old. Houses are beautiful on that street, you know? Why do we want to try to change that? Because something happened across the street that wasn't maybe done the right way? We had walkway on the other side of the street. I don't think we've exhausted our ways to find out what we need to do. And I think there are ways that can be done. I think maybe we need to get the state involved, Mr. Bill Arrakis involved, maybe other than ourselves, and have somebody look into that. But, uh, doing what we're talking about, I do not think that's the answer for sidewalks on the east side of the street. So, uh, I, I hope that you reconsider and look at sidewalks or something else that could be done. And I, I, I really think that looking into the state is probably a very good, uh, answer. So, please take our consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anita Proz, nine oh one Bay Shore Drive. I respect how they think, for friends, and I respect them. But let me tell you something. What you did at the last meeting isn't wrong. That's your right to conduct your business. I know twenty years I've been on boards here and on the commission and mayor. We worked hard. You were in your right that how the meeting was conducted. They may not like it. They may not understand it, but you did the right thing, and your attorney told you. It's up to you to decide what you want to do, but I want it understood here. They did not do anything underhanded. They did not do anything wrong. They acted within their rights. I know our city manager is not going to do something underhanded. The mayor isn't, and these commissioners aren't. And I, I don't like hearing, uh, you being bad-mouthed for so- doing something wrong because you didn't. That's how these meetings and our business is conducted. People were here. They could have spoken more, but they didn't. Mr. Bill Arrakis is federal. He doesn't have jurisdiction with us except helping on grants. The state's not going to come in and help us. We take care of our own government, and we vote for these people depending on them to do the right thing. You are correct in your kind of conduct that night. You did nothing wrong.
Thank you.
Costa Vaticaudis, five thirty-eight West Cedar Street. I'd like to call a point of order. And hopefully, Mr. Trask can answer this question. It's not question and answer, but it's a point of order. I think there was a legitimate question asked by how, what happened between January and last week is different than what happened between last week and today. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Mayor, excuse me. It's a point of order.
You can't raise a point of order from the audience, Costa. It would have to be by one of the board members.
You have to be on the board.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay.
I'm Ron Haddad, three thirty-four Bay Street, downtown Tarpon. We're just maybe a hundred feet away from South Spring Boulevard. I'm not here to comment on what was done. That was right. I know all of you, and I respect your work, and I, I trust that you're doing the right thing. Many of my neighbors live along the east side of South Spring Boulevard, and the thought of having a sidewalk put just a few feet away from their homes is, in their mind, and I think rightly so, very, very disruptive to their lives. And I was here at the last meeting, and I think the, uh, commission approved a study to see if it would be appropriate to put a sidewalk on the west side. My feeling is, why put something on the east side when we haven't come up with any conclusive resolution about the west side, which would be, I, in my mind, the far better location for a sidewalk? So, thank you.
Tim Cofalas, two oh five Leafwood. I'm not questioning whether you had the legal right or the need to put it there. I'm just questioning that it wasn't on the agenda, and I wasn't here in January. I've been staying away from the city politics. But when I read in the paper what took place, it made the city look, look bad. And I had people call me that read the paper and said, "What is going on in Tarpon?" And, um, I contacted, uh, Ria, and I said, "I, I don't understand this." She said, you know, "Come Tuesday night. It's going to be on the agenda." Uh, my concern is not that whether you had the legal right or not, but if, why do we even have these meetings if you can just go ahead and add things on that weren't on there to begin with? I think that you need to look at it. Do you even have easements to go onto that sidewalk? I know I had a house on Holiday Drive, and they had to reroute all the utilities, and they couldn't put a sidewalk there because they had no easements to come on, on that property. So we never, while I was there, had, had sidewalks. But I think that you need to look at the impact on the trees, because it said in the article that I read that there's trees in the street, and it's going to be a, a problem. I think you need to take this back and reconsider. I would hope that somebody would reconsider and then have your, your full, uh, board here, your full commission, looking at it and say, "We should do this the right way," and have a vote. Maybe it'll come out the same. Maybe it, it won't. And have a vote. Maybe it'll come out the same. Maybe it won't. But you need to do it to show the people that you do believe that they have a voice in government. Or they aren't going to come here. They're going to stop participating. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
My name is Patricia Haddad, 334 Bay Street, Tarpon Springs. I... My husband just spoke. I support what he said about the reconsideration of Spring Boulevard sidewalk. And I hope that you discuss this and change the vote from what it was at the last meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any more public comments? Okay, it comes back to the commission. Commission call.
I have a, I did request for Mr... I know, but I did request for Mr. Malone's letter to be read out loud because that was part of the public comment.
Go ahead. That's fine.
This is dated June 22nd from David Malone, resident and owner of 319 South Spring Boulevard, regarding upcoming vote on South Spring Boulevard sidewalk proposal. I am writing to express my views associated with the upcoming vote. I'm working in California this week and will not be able to attend in person. I have copied Jean Lindsay, one of my neighbors on the same street, in hopes that she can ensure my voice is heard prior to the vote. When searching for a vacation retirement home, we specifically chose Florida and Tarpon Springs in particular as we could trust that logical rule of law would apply. We received notice on the first vote around this controversial sidewalk proposal late last year and took steps to work with our neighbors to ensure our views as a taxpayer were represented at the January 2019 meeting. We were pleased when common sense prevailed and the east side sidewalk proposal was defeated. Imagine my shock when I heard of the quasi-Banana Republic-type meeting earlier this month when the city overturned the legitimate vote in a rushed, virtually unpublicized form. I am glad that various media sources called out that unfair process by which the second, and I dare to say borderline illegally constituted, meeting was held and pleased to hear that the city is reopening this discussion for proper transparent vote. I bought this property primarily because it was a beautiful front yard and views of the water. My belief was that this should, that should a sidewalk ever be deemed necessary, it would be placed on the west side closer to the water where pedestrians could also enjoy the great views as well. I'm sure the reason no sidewalk was ever considered on the east side for the past four to five decades at least was that there simply wasn't room for it without a significant impact on the personal enjoyment and space of residents on the east side of the street. In my particular situation, the earlier proposal east sidewalk placement would virtually eliminate any ability to park cars in my half-circular front driveway. This is quite unfair to impose this type of hardship on me or my neighbors when the west side of the street is very viable, is a very viable option. I'm hoping the city will respect the views of the local South Spring residents who pay considerable taxes on the street and not be dictated by special interest voices who have little slash no direct interest in our neighborhood. Thanks very much for your consideration.
Thank you. Commission call.
Thanks, Mayor. City manager, if you could just clarify one more time. Typically, we don't approve sidewalks. We typically approve sidewalk funding. I know within the last couple of meetings, we didn't approve any sidewalks ago and but we approved sidewalk funding out by Sunset Beach and neighborhoods that don't have sidewalks, off peace on road that need connectivity, that don't have connectivity on sidewalks. So would this come back? Did I understand that correctly? Would this come back for funding approval? Okay, it would come back for funding approval?
Yeah.
Okay. So at that point, public comment would happen then at that point too, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks. And then also, just a couple of other questions for clarification. The city already put together a study to show that there's a significant amount of easement, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. And then, there was a question that the, I forgot your name already. I'm sorry. Ms. Lindsay had, city attorney, and I would be happy to support her question to you if you could help elaborate a little bit further on that.
So the answer to the question is, is that you're never totally prohibited from readdressing a situation that has come to you in the past. The idea of the motion for reconsideration is to address it timely. So, you know, the five months or six months that has passed, you know, there, things may have changed. Thoughts may have changed. Your commission has changed. You have two new commissioners on board and you cannot tie the hands from commission to commission on any particular project. And I would also liken it to, if you had made a decision not to pave a road, does that mean that for now and forever that you can never pave that road? You could never extend a potable water line because you decided at one point not to do it? You cannot put in a stormwater system? You cannot build a water plant because someone in the past has decided at this commission level that they were not interested at that particular time? I don't, I don't think that in the real world, you know, that is something that would prevent you from, you know, hearing again. And, you know, and I know I was probably here at that meeting, but I don't remember the specific motion that was made. So I'm not sure if it was substantively the same thing that was addressed at the meeting two weeks ago. But, and that may be another reason to reconsider. It wasn't substantively exactly the same. So, yeah, hopefully that will answer your question.
Could we read the motion?
I think... Excuse me?
Could we read the motion since, you know, it's in our backup?
So I think just with the combination of hearing the city manager, this is going to be coming back for funding, that there's really no additional comments right now to be made. It's going to be back amongst the commission for additional discussion and the public can either share thoughts forward or against it at that time. But it's going to be a public hearing. It'll be noticed. I know there's some discussions about underhanding other aspects. That's not the case. This is a corridor that's used by a lot of residents in Tarpon Springs. There's a lot of easement in this area. Growing up in Tarpon Springs, this is a safety issue. We've talked about the rocks across the street. It was a mistake to install the rocks, in my opinion. But this is the best situation we have right now to address a safety concern. So, that's all I have to say.
Commission call. Commissioner Donovan.
Yeah, I want to say I really appreciate all the public comment tonight. Again, I don't believe that anything was underhanded or lacked transparency. I believe that it was a common sense issue. It was a safety issue and it's honestly routine for the city to look at our available easements and connect sidewalks. It was a safety issue for the pedestrians that go around the bayou. And honestly, I don't, I don't see it as a hardship to have a sidewalk within the city easement in your front yard. But again, I'm always available to take a call or talk about this further and you guys will have another opportunity for public comment when it comes up for funding. Thank you.
Thank you. I heard the word "underhanded." I don't think anyone here on the commission has ever done that. I think everybody's very honest here. We're here because we want to serve the people. We want to serve you. And we're doing our best to actually provide you with the best service possible. And first of all, I want to thank all of you for being here tonight and waiting this long and also like to thank everybody who called me. And many people expressed their concern about safety of the pedestrians. A lot of people are jogging on the street. I agree that the appropriate phrase for sidewalk would have been on the west side of the street, but because those rocks would be placed, which was a terrible design. But this is what we have to work with now. We have an issue right now, which is a safety issue. We need to connect the sidewalks in order to provide safety to the people. I heard the comment that some people are going to have the yards to be smaller. Well, the property where the sidewalk is going to be built, it is, it's a city property. It's not owned by any individual one. And that's a serious responsibility to provide safety. This is one of our biggest responsibilities that we have as elected official, is to provide safety. So, and again, I want to thank you and sympathize for not, for not, for you don't like the decision that was made, but it was not underhanded. And again, everybody here on the board are very, they're doing the best to provide you with the best service as possible. Thank you. Do you want to comment?
I was just going to say, to bring back what the motion was, was to move forward with the designs of the sidewalk on the east side. Although it would be preferable to cover up the riprap, but that motion was made for, to move forward for the design. So that means that we, we will be spending money and time to do that, right? Rather than discussing anything on the west side.
Do we have any motion on the floor? Don't have a motion on the floor? No motion. It dies. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is item number 29, the website. Commissioner Donovan.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm actually going to need the PowerPoint, the board up for this. And I'd encourage the mayor and commissioners, if you guys would look at the PowerPoint rather than the packet. Just because some of the stuff I'm going to discuss has to do with color and style and in our packet, it's just black and white. Is there a, an on button or a remote that I can use to get this up and running?
It's marked somewhere over there. On the dais. Is it on the dais? Or to the right of the projector, it looks like. There you go.
Could we pass this down?
And actually, would it be okay? I think the city manager can answer this. Can I get up there to do it so that I can face the screen and present it?
You can.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, commissioners. I'm excited to take a look at improving our city website. I put together this PowerPoint. It consists just of simple pictures of our website and different options. Hopefully possible solutions, just so that, you know, we're basing it off of something that's feasible and local and what other municipalities are doing with their website. So this is our current website. If you look at our home screen, excuse me, if you look at our home screen, it's full of hyperlinks. It's really colorless. The two sidebars take up a third of the screen and they're just gray sidebars that don't have any content or purpose. They actually also blend in with the overall header. Also, the, excuse me, the hyperlinks that consist on the website are incoherent. All those hyperlinks you see, the picture on the right is just scrolled down on the home screen. So that's the current homepage of our city website. So we get the "Welcome to Tarpon Springs." We have some nice pictures up there. We have, I believe it's holiday closings for the city and then just sporadic hyperlinks from there. So it's really disorganized and it's not user-friendly. And the, the primary goal of a website, in my eyes, is the least clicks possible. If I'm a resident and I'm accessing my city website, I want to get to where I'm going. I want to find out what I need to find out. And I don't believe that our current website puts our residents or users in the best position to do that. So this is further on a website. This is actually in a different department entirely. I believe it's the building department. This left picture that you'll see up there, I screen capped it. It's, again, just a bunch of incoherent hyperlinks. And then actually, when you scroll over the hyperlink, it disappears. It blends in with the gray background of the link, so you can't even see what you're about to click on. I then went to a different section of our website and they're all pretty much like our online services picture you see there. It's plenty of hyperlinks, no real direction. Looks like it's on the back of a Word document. So this is, this is an example going forward. This is Clearwater's website. This is just an option. Note the colors and the simplicity of the layout. The city is prominent on the top left along with their city slogan. And it's also presented with the backdrop of a local picture of their downtown. It's colorful. It's neat and it's simple. So the three things to highlight here are the buttons: work, live, play. So obviously, if you just go back to our website, it's all gray. There's a bunch of different subheadings, full links. This website is simple. There's no scrolling down here. This is just it. And if you click on these buttons based on what you're there to do, it changes a sidebar on the left. So this is work. So you can see, "Apply for a building permit," "Apply for employment," "Invitation to bid." If I clicked on "Play," I would see beach parking, Parks and Recreation, special events calendars, marinas. And then if I clicked on "Live," I would see my utility bill payment, solid waste collection, council meetings and agendas, stuff for residents. So this is a different option to consider. This is Dunedin's website. This is about as simple as it gets, at least when you first open the page. It's literally just a picture from Honeymoon Island. Up there, you can see kind of what I believe is the same consultant or at least the same type of people building these city websites for our surrounding cities. Because you can also see the "Live, Work, Play" subheading over there. And when you scroll over it, it's pretty much the same exact thing as what Clearwater was doing, but it's just layered differently. So if you scroll down on the Dunedin website, you'll see community news. You'll see city meetings. You'll see different public events. And again, it's just a simple three-bar design. It looks neat. It looks professional. You also have agenda and minutes. Those are permanent up there. So that way, if anybody wants to pay their utility bill or access past meetings, they just have to click on that. But you can scroll through the news, meetings, events. The events calendar, I really like. That's actually interactive completely. So if I click on any different dates or I can click on a whole different set of dates, it'll tell me what's going on when. So moving forward again, this is another different, unique option that comes from another local municipality. So this is Largo. Again, you've got the simple picturesque wide design, your community of choice. And this one features a search bar and it's really prominent. And again, right below that, you've got the same theme, "Live, Work, Play." And again, does the same exact thing. If you live there, you click on that one. You can pay your bills, whatever. You work. You can receive bids. If you scroll down a little bit on this Largo site, so again, this is what it looks when you open it up, but if you scroll down a little bit, you'll see that they have a few more buttons. That's a little overly stylish, in my opinion, because they got the curved buttons. That kind of confused me. But they do have the city news down there that actually just links to local news sources and their website. And if you keep looking into the search bar, which again, is the first, it's their marquee thing. It's the "I want to find." I wanted to see if it worked because in my experience, a lot of city websites and municipal websites, when you look up anything in a search bar, it, it never works, at least not appropriate. You'll get an error or something like that. It actually did work very well. I typed in "building permit." It took me right to "building services." You see "permits," "frequently asked questions," and "inspections." And I tried it with a couple of other different options and it actually does work very well. So again, I want to have a discussion about our website, how we can do better format-wise, functionality, style, colors, least clicks possible. But really, we owe it to our residents to have a better website. I mean, look at these pictures from other websites. Look at the homepage that you pull up. You've got Largo right here. It's an awesome sunset in Largo. You've got Dunedin. They've got pictures of their nature. You can all scroll through different pictures of downtown Dunedin's in there. You've got Clearwater, bright and beautiful, and their website's bright and beautiful. And then you come to Tarpon Springs and frankly, it looks like something that happened a few decades ago. And there's something to be said for the simplicity of it. And I understand that from a data entry point, we need those links on there. But I just think there's a much better way to compile them. So anyway, I just want to open up for discussion and possibly direction on what the commission would like to see, whether or not we want to redo our website, whether or not we just want to look at different pricings for different consultants to do it, whether or not it would even be feasible to have something be done in-house. So I just wanted to open up for discussion and I'll go back to my seat.
Okay. Great job, Commissioner Donovan. I agree with you. Our website is not user-friendly at all. If you look for the charter, as I was looking the other day, it was difficult to find.
And I, I discussed it with Mr. Licoris, and I probably remember right, he was telling me that he was looking at designer, or was thinking about doing something with that, correct?
Well, yes, I think I've told you several times, and first of all, I've tried to instill in my staff that this is nothing against them, because we had some people work very hard, make this simplistic website, and the reason we did it on our own, instead of like Dunedin, Clearwater did, I'm getting the pricing now, but I remember the pricing it costs. So in our past budgets, we've had, we haven't had that money, um, to do that, so we still did something in-house that was functional. And obviously, we all agree that, yeah, it's not like the rest of the websites, but we're not spending between thirty-five and sixty thousand dollars to do it now. Now, that may be an option, um, what I told you, I wanna look at and see with our expertise, or maybe getting some, if there's a way we can improve it in-house. But it may be a time in budget when we're looking at the different things, that, that group of money that you have to do either on project beautifications. It may be, it may be the time that if we can't make it look like you want it to do, that we have to bite the bullet in budget. Cause it's simply a matter of budget, and this, it costs, the maintenance of it, I think Dunedin's maintenance, when I talk to them's, ten or eleven thousand a year just for the maintenance of the website, I think every time you change it, there's a fee. Um, we're getting that, we're getting that information back up, but when we looked at it before and decided to go, it was purely cost and the inability to have it budgeted to do. But the two things I wanna look is, what can we do in-house, or maybe bring somebody in to help us to see what we can do? And then present that to you, and if that's not gonna be what you want, then we have to look in this budget and, and we'll have to bring you the cost to budget, um, what these cities pay. And it's hard, I know, I know it's gonna be hard with Clearwaters, cause I know they spent over a hundred thousand dollars, but I don't know, they probably did some more things in there than the website, so when we get theirs, we're gonna have to kinda break it down to try to get what exactly was the website portion. Cause I believe remembering when we look back before, they did other things besides the website. And also, I think a lot of their cost was, was moving the information over to the new website, but, but we'll go back and look at some of those things to look at what the other cities have done. We'll look at what we can do, as I think I told you last time I talked to you, we're working simplistically, but kinda on the website for the explore Tarpon. We wanna kinda see how that looks like, um, but we'll look at those different options and bring it back to you. And maybe one of those things, we talk in one of our budget meetings that, uh, you know, it is time to find the money and bring in the professionals to, to do it and stuff. I'll try to get some other options, because again, there's gonna be recurring costs, we want anything changed, that's, that's the fee. So it's, it might be just what you're gonna do, but we'll see what we can do, um, on our end, and if there's someone we can bring in to help us, I'd rather us be able to manage it than be under the control of somebody we can't really give money to, but if it's not possible, then we may have to go the other route.
Yeah, Mr. Licoris, thank you, and I remember this very well. The website was created in-house at a time when we had, it was a difficult economic period, and it was a service purpose. And, uh, uh, when the, uh, the website was created, it was not that much information when it was defined, but at the time it went by, many things went, got to the website, now it's time to look, just like you said.
We all know, again, we did hard work, but we also know there's a better product out there to put up there, so we, we realize that also.
And, uh, Commissioner Donovan, I would appreciate you, uh, providing the input of, uh, of your idea.
Yeah, and again, I mean, I, I know, you know, Tarpon Springs is unique, I think we can improve on these ideas, you know, we're not Clearwater, we're not Dunedin, we're not Largo. I just wanna throw these out there so that you could see kind of the scale of where other cities are at. And I just think we're really falling behind in this, so again, I mean, I, I know, I wanna see the pricing, of course, um, and whether or not it'd be feasible to do something in-house again, or, or what we can do, but I mean, if we can get creative, the more creative, the better, I mean, I'm, I'm still open to seeing a bunch of options.
I'm sure Mr. Licoris will know what kind of expertise that we have, if it can be done in-house, you could, if not, I guess we have to go outside and look for it. Commissioner Carr?
Thanks, Mayor, uh, yeah, thanks, Commissioner Donovan, for bringing this forward. I do wanna thank staff for their diligence to update the website, um, it is a simple click here website that, um, I've received a lot of unsolicited comments about our website in the past too, um, just how it's difficult to navigate, uh, at times. Um, and I, I, there is an appreciation as well, though, that there's the hyperlinks in the very front, to where you just go straight to the news, if we have something we could just throw on there. But, um, I think it would be good just to have like a news tab, and then you click on that tab at the front, and then you get into all the details, right, that you could go into. So, uh, I do think this is a good idea to redesign, uh, obviously, there's a lot of templates that you can buy, or just go onto the template website, they're not very expensive. We don't have to necessarily pay, or the city doesn't necessarily pay a, a designer for a website, so that might be a good alternative to see as well. Um, there's some templates that are available, and there's like a monthly domain or monthly, um, servicing, uh, or even if you do use a designer, um, I think we have a communications, um, staff member that could still update the website, um, and manage it from that staff level that we wouldn't, as a city, the city wouldn't have to pay to, um, have it updated regularly, or something along those lines. I'm in favor of, uh, looking at a design option and, uh, continuing to move this forward, I do like this sponger, um, and I do like some of the pictures that are there, uh, that can be utilized, uh, maybe better and a better design, so I'm looking forward to see what's gonna come forward. I think it's Mark, isn't it, up there?
Yes, uh, thank you, uh, Connor, and I do wanna recognize our staff, I think it was a couple years ago only, that we, uh, redid our website, and Suzanne worked hard on it, and so I wanna make sure that they are recognized. Yeah, I, I can always see improvement, I don't wanna lose our culture and not have our sponge diver on our website. So I think we need to keep, you know, that in mind with Tarpon Springs is, is what our culture is, but, uh, yeah, I'm looking forward to seeing what you come up with, Mark, that we may be able to use some of these ideas and work on it in-house without spending a hundred thousand dollars, um, on a designer and, 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 uh, upkeep, so, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Donovan, have any comments anymore?
Uh, no, no, none further.
Okay, well, thank you again for, uh, bringing it forward.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. The next item, item number thirty, internship program, Commissioner Donovan.
Uh, yeah, and thank you, Mark, for letting me kinda sandwich two, two agenda items together back-to-back here in an already long meeting. Um, so I'll try to be as, as brief as possible. Uh, I wanna discuss the possibility of creating unpaid internship that would focus on commissioners mentoring students that are passionate about public service. So what I ended up doing was, I reached out to the Saint Petersburg College Public Policy and Administration Program, of which I'm a graduate. Um, and I, and I just asked them, I said, hey, I know you do a lot of different partnerships with different cities in terms of internships, but this is just a unique idea that, that I had, and I think might be feasible, uh, would you, would you be willing to participate? And they were just absolutely thrilled, um, I mean, so many of these college students are so passionate about public service, and they could really use kind of a guiding force, um, in their life, and just somebody to bounce different questions off of. So not only is this an opportunity to collaborate with our local college and help shape future community leaders, uh, but this will also help, hopefully, possibly have our, our city attract new employees, uh, that are qualified with degrees, um, and can be kind of exposed to what our city's all about. So I, I made this little city commission internship, um, I guess pamphlet or application, uh, I'm not really sure what you would wanna call it. I won't read all of it, um, but I will just go over the highlights for, um, people watching. Uh, this internship will give Tarpon Springs City Commissioners the opportunity to mentor students that are in the Saint Petersburg College Public Policy and Administration Program. Participating and choosing to mentor a student is completely optional. If a commissioner chooses to mentor a student, they may determine their own meeting times and what they would like the student to do. But I just wanna really, um, kinda reiterate that it's, it's totally optional, so if a commissioner has a busy schedule, or they don't, you know, wanna have to deal with an intern or a mentorship, then, then you don't have to, it's just an option that, that commissioners can, can take up, and it's also unpaid. So the objectives of the internship would be to provide an opportunity for elected officials to mentor future community leaders, provide students with valuable public service experience that will enhance their skills and ability, and it goes on to list some more. The student responsibilities would include largely what the individual commissioner would like to do. Off the top of my head, the first things I thought of were to participate in the research and study of upcoming agenda items and various city issues, attend city commission meetings and work sessions, engage in weekly meetings with their commissioner regarding public service, city issues, career goals, and general questions that they may have about public administration or public office. Uh, again, there's, there's a few more on there, but I'll move to student timing. I was thinking it'd be eight weeks, um, that's half a semester for most colleges. It could be more or less, uh, I'm open to discussion on it, and I, I threw in there, it'd probably be about three to ten hours of work per week, um, including outside independent research, if a commissioner wanted to let them in on kind of their process, on how they go about reading and studying up on the agenda items. Qualifications are pretty simple, be enthusiastic about the field of public service and have a strong interest in city government. Be a student of the SPC Public Policy and Administration Program. And then I added a little parentheses in here, cause eventually, I'd like to see the same thing be done with the Tarpon Springs High School. But I guess for the first step, we could collaborate with the college, because those are students that have already chosen their major, we know that they're passionate about this. And then if that goes over well, then we can possibly reach out to the high school and, and see if they'd like to join as well. Um, and then the application process, again, very simple, I'll just submit a resume and cover letter, please mention why you are interested in local government and what skills you hope to develop. And then the individual commissioners can select their students based off resumes or cover letters, or however they wanna do it. So with that, I'll, I'll toss it up for discussion, criticism, um, ideas, whatever you guys think.
Another good one, Commissioner Donovan, thank you. My, uh, recommendation with that is, and, and I'm glad already, that you already spoke to, uh, uh, to the people of the, um, Saint Petersburg College, uh, the Provost, Dr. Davis, he will love this program, I know that. He's always liked to get, to get involved with the, with the city. Just in addition to what, uh, you were talking about, they're thinking to, um, the, the college is thinking of creating a program with a major in public service to provide, um, to provide, um, employees for, uh, uh, the city position. This is still in the, in designing stage, they haven't, uh, worn forward with that, uh, but they are thinking very seriously to do that. So I think combined with that, it's gonna be a good program. What I'd like to suggest to Mr. Licoris is to see how many students you can support or something like these, and how many, uh, you know, what can you do with it, you know, we don't wanna get a lot of students and then not be able to, uh, to support them.
Well, again, you know, the commissioners, the way this is set, you know, you would be the ones who would take him on now. What I wanna say to you, and obviously, I've worked with, with the group that he talks about at the college, I've gone down and, and spoken to them in career. So what I'd like to offer up also is that for you commissioners who have busy work schedule, and you look at this and say, geez, the whole eight weeks, um, the times that you can't meet with a person, or the weeks that are bad, I would be glad to take over, and myself and staff, um, for consistency, cause I know some of you may be worried about, about taking this on, cause of work. We'd be glad, I, myself, or my staff would be glad to fill the gaps to you, um, um, to go to it.
That's one of the reasons to support, because I know some of the commissions, like you said, they're very busy, so.
Well, again, I, I, you know, I support this completely, again, I've worked with the public policy group and wanted to expand it, and this is the perfect way to do it. So, um, again, we can take it on and take on the students that, that, that you as commissioners wanna sponsor, and then we can go from there.
Well, I can speak for myself that I'm always available.
Thanks, uh, Connor, Commissioner Donovan, thanks for bringing this up, uh, great idea, again. As a college student, uh, not too long ago, um, obviously, you're closer to that than I am now. Uh, you always look for opportunities, um, to get your foot in the door for experience, or you're looking for opportunities to just gain, um, some real-life experience. And I think this is a great opportunity for some students here locally to see how their local government runs. And, um, although it would be difficult to spend, um, or the commitment with my schedule, I mean, I could figure it out at times to do this, um, with a student, obviously, it wouldn't be consecutively throughout the year, but I could break some time away to do that as well. Um, and it's encouraging that city staff is willing to help as well with that too, so I'm, I'm in support of this, I think it's a great idea. Any, any way we could help, um, shape somebody to get in public service, uh, I would completely support.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea, uh, Connor, uh, and my question was to Mark, because, uh, also, as, as you mentioned, um, the time for Mark and, and our city staff and, and department heads to, uh, to, to be able to have, uh, with these students, you know, that that's agreeable with you. I think a great idea, I mean, a lot of the stuff that you're talking about covering is in Citizens Academy. And I would encourage these students to also participate in Citizens Academy, because they do learn our city functions, uh, with that program, and it's a great program.
Any other questions? Yeah?
Um, yeah, and I, I think Citizens Academy is a fantastic program, and we could definitely encourage them to, to do that as well. Um, another thing I wanted to reiterate is that it would largely be up to the commissioner, or, or the mayor, or vice mayor, however they wanted to do it. So you could say, hey, let's meet Monday for an hour at, at City Hall, and we can talk. Or you could say, hey, I'm really stacked this week, uh, we can FaceTime or do a phone call or something like that. I mean, largely, I wanna leave it independent commissioner to commissioner, because every commissioner has a different schedule, different priorities, different things that they're doing. So again, with your guys' kind of recommendation saying, yeah, let's, let's move forward with this, I can work further with the college, um, on kinda crafting this. Cause I met with them, I bounced these ideas by them, they were all for it, but I can hammer out a more detailed, I guess, kinda specification of, of everything. And bring it back to you guys, uh, and I, I can work with Mark on that as well, and again, I appreciate, um, you kinda sparing some of the department heads' times and, and your own time to work with these kids.
Any public comments on this item? Well, that concludes the agenda tonight, and we go to the staff comments, Chief?
No comments, Mayor, thank you.
Tom?
Yeah, I just wanted to bring to your attention section two dash one fifty-seven of your code in relation to Resolution twenty nineteen nineteen that, that failed tonight. This was the conditional use application for storage trust, since it was a two-two split. Your code specifically provides, and I'll just read it, under section two dash one fifty-seven for NC, in the event that there is a tie vote, the matter shall be considered an equipoise and shall be placed on the next regular meeting for reconsideration. So you're gonna hear the storage trust case again, um, when you have a full board. So when you see it on your agenda, that's the reason why your code requires it. It needs to be a notice the same way that the previous meeting was noticed, so the answer is yes. That's all I have, thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Licoris?
No, sir.
Madam Senator Clerk?
Nothing.
Commissioner Carr?
Thanks, Mayor, I just wanna reiterate, uh, tonight, we talked about scholarships for students at Tarpon Springs High School and at Saint Pete College, for art students, and then, um, Commissioner Donovan brought up also the internship for Saint Pete College as well. Uh, I'm encouraged as a board that we're looking for avenues to speak into students' lives and helping student lives, um, in our community and our area. So I just wanna reiterate that and say, uh, great job to everybody.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes, uh, I just wanna remind everyone that we have Night in the Islands, uh, this Saturday on the SpongeDocks, hope you all make it out there, thanks.
None for me, Mayor, thank you.
Tom? Hey, I have some announcements to make, uh, Commissioner Seber, already said about the Night of the Islands, but we also have the same day, started June twenty-ninth, the, uh, family double dare, from five PM to eight PM at the community center. And this is hosted by our Recreation Department. July fourth, we have the picnic in the park that begins at ten AM, two PM. Um, Mr. Licoris is going to have, I'm sure, a lot of barbecue and a lot of games for the, uh, for the, for the kids, correct?
Good barbecue, hot dogs.
Okay, and we also have, uh, July fourth, we got the fireworks. Uh, the best place to view them is at the Howard Park. Friday, July fifth, is the first Friday, that begins at six PM to ten PM, I can't believe it's been a month already. Well, that concludes our regular session, and it's adjourned at ten thirty-eight PM. Um, well, that concludes our regular session, and it's adjourned at ten thirty-eight P.M.